प्रभु इन्तिनी निर्मिंचु चुंडे सजीवमयना आरालतो प्रभु इन्तिनी निर्मिंचु चुंडे सजीवमयना आरालतो आयन महिमा दानी यंदुंडा तन संकल्पमयुन्नदि आयन महिमा दानी यंदुंडा तन संकल्पमयुन्नदि प्रभु निग्रुहमो आयन महिमतो परिपुनमुगा निंदेनो प्रभु निग्रुहमो आयन महिमतो परिपुनमुगा निंदेनो
धन्यवाद परिषद देवा मा प्रभु नु प्रीरक्षकुड़े ने एसु कृष्ट वारी अत्यन्त तंग है चिंचपन नामन ई मध्यानकाल समय लोकुड़ा मरोक्सारी मी पादसन निचंत चेर रावड़ा निकमा किचनी तरण को वंदनाल चलिस्तन ओदे कालो मी नाराधिन स्थान की बालो योगिंग पालपंपल पंद्रतन की सहाय पट्टारु इप्डु यवनसुल कोरके ने समय एंतो आशीर्वाद करेंगे चेंडी मी दासुन द्वारा मी वाक्य मा कानुग्रेन चेंडी मी दासुन आत्मपुण्य गच्छे से बाल पर्च वाड़ कोणी प्रीतन री पाठल पाडे समय आन कोड़ दीवन करेंगे चेंडी पाठलो ना बावानी ग्रहिस्तु पाटन की मक्षाहाय चेंडी प्रामा विंदुलो मिट्टी से सहाय को वंदनाल चलिस्तु एसु प्रभु स्रास्त नामन स्तुतिंची प्रार्थिस्तन नाम तंड्री आमेन मी केवन पाठल शीट नुंडी रेंडो पाठ पाड़ कुंडम सांग नंबर टू ने नेल्ला पुड़ू यहो वनो सन्नुतिंच दम रेंडो पाठ पाड़ कुंडम
ने नेल्ला पुड़ू यहो वनो सन्नुतिंच दल नित्यमु आयन कीर्ति नानोटनुंडुल ने नेल्ला पुड़ू यहो वनो सन्नुतिंच दल नित्यमु आयन कीर्ति नानोटनुंडुल अंता ना मेलुके आराधन एसुके अंता ना मंचिके तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो ने सुतीं छुटमाननो कन्नीले पानमुलैना गटिन दुख का बादलैना स्तिति गतुले मारिना अवकाशम चे जारिना गटिन दुख का बादलैना स्तिति गतुले मारिना अवकाशम चे जारिना मारदु एसु प्रेमा नित्युडैना तंड्र प्रेमा 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 अंता ना मेलुके आराधन एसुके अंता ना मंचिके तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो ने सुतीं छुटमाननो अवमानम यंतैना नावारे कादन्ना नेवु तप्पा यवरुन्नारु आकाशमंदुना अवमानम यंतैना नावारे कादन्ना नेवु तप्पा यवरुन्नारु आकाशमंदुना नेवु नाकुंडगा एदी नाक करले दु 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 अंता ना मेलुके आराधन एसुके अंता ना मंचिके तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो ने सुतीं छुटमाननो चदुले रागुन्ना ओटमी पालैना उद्योगम लेखुन्ना भूमिके बरुवैना चदुले रागुन्ना ओटमी पालैना उद्योगम लेखुन्ना भूमिके बरुवैना नायडलनी तलंपुलु एंतो प्रियमुलु नायडलनी तलंपुलु एंतो प्रियमुलु नेवु देसिंचिनदि निश्वलमो काले दु नेवु देसिंचिनदि निश्वलमो काले दु अंता ना मेलुके आराधन एसुके अंता ना मंचिके तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो ने सुतीं छुटमाननो चकलवाना फिलबुद्दी निम्मे प्रेमिंचु नाकु समसमु समकूडी मेलुकै जरुबु चकलवाना फिलबुद्दी निम्मे प्रेमिंचु नाकु समसमु समकूडी मेलुकै जरुबु एसु नी सारूप्यमु नेनु पोंदारणी एसु नी सारूप्यमु नेनु पोंदारणी अनुमतिंचिनाई बिलोवैना सिलोहकरे अनुमतिंचिनाई बिलोवैना सिलोहकरे अंता ना मेलुके आराधन एसुके अंता ना मंचिके तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो नेवु चेयुनदि नाकी कुड़ देलीयदु इका मीदा काले नु देसिकुंदु नेवु चेयुनदि नाकी कुड़ देलीयदु इका मीदा काले नु देसिकुंदु रस्तु समु समसमु दुस्ता करमे रस्तु समु समसमु दुस्ता करमे आपे सिंचिनाहिति समाधान बलमे आपे सिंचिनाहिति समाधान बलमे अंता ना मेलुके आराधन एसुके अंता ना मंचिके तन चित्तमुनकु तलवंचिते आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो आराधन आपनो सुतीं छुटमाननो ने सुतीं छुटमाननो
पाठल प्रथुलो नुंडी नालगो पाठ पाड़ कुंडम सांग नंबर फोर नालगो पाटा एसु नादुडु ना हृदय नादुडु एल्ला वेल्ला ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम
एसु नादुडु ना हृदय नादुडु एल्ला वेल्ला ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एल्ला वेल्ला नन्नो काचे एसुडु एन्ना रईननु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम नाशनकरमयना कुंडतुंडी नन्नो जिगटगला गोंगवूपि नुंडी नन्नो नाशनकरमयना कुंडतुंडी नन्नो जिगटगला गोंगवूपि नुंडी नन्नो पाईकिले पेनो नन्नो पाईकिले पेनो बंडपाई ना नन्नो निलु अभेट्टेनो पाईकिले पेनो नन्नो पाईकिले पेनो बंडपाई ना नन्नो निलु अभेट्टेनो एसु नादुडु ना हृदय नादुडु एल्ला वेल्ला ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एल्ला वेल्ला नन्नो काचे एसुडु एन्ना रईननु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम दुर्गंधमु तोनिंडी ना नन्नो दयकोड़ा नेवु फिलचितीवी दुर्गंधमु तोनिंडी ना नन्नो दयकोड़ा नेवु फिलचितीवी सर्दितितीवी ना जीवितमुनो नी प्रेमकै ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम सर्दितितीवी ना जीवितमुनो नी प्रेमकै ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एसु नादुडु ना हृदय नादुडु एल्ला वेल्ला ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एल्ला वेल्ला नन्नो काचे एसुडु एन्ना रईननु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम नी रक्षमु तो नन्नो कड़ीगितीवी परिषद निगाह नन्नो चेसितीवी नी रक्षमु तो नन्नो कड़ीगितीवी परिषद निगाह नन्नो चेसितीवी नी रक्षणकै स्तोत्रामु चेयुचु निद्यम निन्नो को नियाणेगनु नी रक्षणकै स्तोत्रामु चेयुचु निद्यम निन्नो को नियाणेगनु एसु नादुडु ना हृदय नादुडु एल्ला वेल्ला ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एल्ला वेल्ला नन्नो काचे एसुडु एन्ना रईननु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एमी नी कर्पिंचा गणु प्रभुआ एमी रे माणनु नेनैया एमी नी कर्पिंचा गणु प्रभुआ एमी रे माणनु नेनैया रक्षणम्पो पात्र नित्ती स्वत्रमंचु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम रक्षणम्पो पात्र नित्ती स्वत्रमंचु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एसु नादुडु ना हृदय नादुडु एल्ला वेल्ला ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एल्ला वेल्ला नन्नो काचे एसुडु एन्ना रईननु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम आराधिन चेदा निन्नो एल्ला वेल्ला सुतीं चेदा निन्नो सदा कालमो आराधिन चेदा निन्नो एल्ला वेल्ला सुतीं चेदा निन्नो सदा कालमो नी प्रेमनु मेन नन्नतरवा ना जीवितमु ना चालिन ब्रहुआ नी प्रेमनु मेन नन्नतरवा ना जीवितमु ना चालिन ब्रहुआ एसु नादुडु ना हृदय नादुडु एल्ला वेल्ला ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम एल्ला वेल्ला नन्नो काचे एसुडु एन्ना रईननु ने स्तुतुलु पाड़ेगम
आरो पाट पाड़ कुंडम हिंदी सांग ईशु तुम महान हरदम्मे तुझे बजु बॉयज एवर सरी के पाटले मी शब्द वेनपोट लेकर नुंचे वेनपेस्तुंडे मेर कोड़ गट्टी पाड़ा बॉयज कोड़ गट्टी पाड़ा तिन्नार गदा तिन्ना पुड़ अलाकी काली के कुछ नावनको निद्र बढ़ते कदर चाला शत्रु मनकर इप्डु वोचिके निद्र बोते इंक प्रयोजन उले कावड़ दाईचे सी गट्टी का पाटन प्रयत्न चें गट्टी का पाटन ओके
ईशु तुम महान हरदम्मे तुझे बजु तु सर्व शक्तिमा तेरी मत शंसा करु ईशु तुम महान हरदम्मे तुझे बजु तु सर्व शक्तिमा तेरी मत शंसा करु जब मैं गुनाहो मेता तब तुने मुझे बचा लिया जब मैं गुनाहो मेता तब तुने मुझे बचा लिया सैतान की जो दिवा धुने ही तोड़दी सैतान की जो दिवा धुने ही तोड़दी ईशु तुम महान हरदम्मे तुझे बजु तु सर्व शक्तिमा तेरी मत शंसा करु ईशु तुम महान हरदम्मे तुझे बजु तु सर्व शक्तिमा तेरी मत शंसा करु ईशु मेरे साथ है सैतान चेविदे पाई है ईशु मेरे साथ है सैतान चेविदे पाई है रस्ता मुझे मिल गया जो मुझको पाना था जीवन मुझे मिल गया जो मुझको पाना था ईशु तुम महान हरदम्मे तुझे बजु तु सर्व शक्तिमा तेरी मत शंसा करु ईशु तुम महान हरदम्मे तुझे बजु तु सर्व शक्तिमा तेरी मत शंसा करु
इप्डु सिस्टर साइड चॉइस मी के एम इस्टमैन पाटो चिप्ति में पाड़ मनंद्र पाड़ 26 26 आरो पाट हम विश्वास से एक देश देखते हैं मल्ला हिंदी पाटा 26 तरवत बॉयज चॉइस कोड़ आड़ूतम मेर कोड़ रडीगाउंडन पाट की सिलेक्ट चेस्कु रडीगाउंडन सांग नंबर 26 हम विश्वास से एक देश देखते हैं
हम विश्वास से एक देश देखते हैं जो हेसुर से अधिक्योतिमा वहां ईशु का राह तयार सरके लिए एक लहर कैसा थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे अपने कान से विश्राम पाएगे सबके इश्क असम की सुती बज मालो और वहा हम सब काएंगे हर से भरपूर थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे ईशु के साथ रहेगे वहा संतोष के साथ रहेगे वहा इन्ना होगा संतार बर्बिला ईशु पांचे गासु वहा थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे उसके आनके सामने इश्वती का न कुछ नहीं उसे सेविदे गानों के सामने इश्वती का संदीप कुछ नहीं थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे थोड़ी देर मेवा प्यारो जागे हम सब मिलेगे
मी अंदर रिग्रा सांग बुक्स उन्नय एवर केत लेवो वाल चेपाई करते दाईचे स्कोड़ बंदी एवर नो पुल तीस केल वाल के वन सिस्टर साइड कोड़ एवर ना उठे दाईचे सी चेतल इतने वाल की स्प्रेड चेंडी सांग शीट्स अवनकाल के वल पाट पुस्तकन चूस्तु पाटन मिन्टू रेंडो सारी कल्सी पाटन प्रयत्न चेन नकवाला मी के राख पोते बॉयज चॉइस आगण 21 21 बार 21 26 पाट पाड़ कुंडम कृष्टे सुप्रभु तन रक्त मिच्छी कोन्नट्टी संगमुन वेल्लो पुरातना अंदर क्रेस्टो सहोदर अंदु कोसमा पाट रिगर कावड़ टीम मन सहोदर नु कोड़ रुप्ति परुष्ट 26 पाट
कृष्टे सुप्रभु तन रक्त मिच्छी कोन्नट्टी संगमुन यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी आपोसालो ला बोधानो नम्मी स्तिरपरचा बड़ी ना वारे आपोसालो ला बोधानो नम्मी स्तिरपरचा बड़ी ना वारे आत्मशक्ति को वारु एल्ला पुड़ संगमुलो निलचे दारो आत्मशक्ति को वारु एल्ला पुड़ संगमुलो निलचे दारो कृष्टे सुप्रभु तन रक्त मिच्छी कोन्नट्टी संगमुन यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी परिषद तो लातो सावा समुनो यवरु कड़ीगियुंदुरो परिषद तो लातो सावा समुनो यवरु कड़ीगियुंदुरो वारे कोन्दे दरु चेवा बिगुत्ती कृष्टे सुप्रभु लंदो वारे कोन्दे दरु चेवा बिगुत्ती कृष्टे सुप्रभु लंदो कृष्टे सुप्रभु तन रक्त मिच्छी कोन्नट्टी संगमुन यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी प्रभु देहा रक्तमुनो चिन्ह तागो वारे तनयंदो निलचे दारो प्रभु देहा रक्तमुनो चिन्ह तागो वारे तनयंदो निलचे दारो रकटिंचे दारो आयान वरणा उनरु तानमुनो वारो रकटिंचे दारो आयान वरणा उनरु तानमुनो वारो कृष्टे सुप्रभु तन रक्त मिच्छी कोन्नट्टी संगमुन यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी पट्टो वदलाका संगमुतो कूड़ी यवरु प्राणिंचे दारो पट्टो वदलाका संगमुतो कूड़ी यवरु प्राणिंचे दारो राजाना द्वारा सातानु प्रियलो वंदिंचे दारो वारे राजाना द्वारा सातानु प्रियलो वंदिंचे दारो वारे कृष्टे सुप्रभु तन रक्त मिच्छी कोन्नट्टी संगमुन यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु परलो कमे वारिनी कृष्टे सुप्रभु नी राकाणा कोरकु यवरे गुरु चूचे दारो कृष्टे सुप्रभु नी राकाणा कोरकु यवरे गुरु चूचे दारो नित्यानंदमुतो साच्या मिच्छे दारो सर्वालो कामो नंदो नित्यानंदमुतो साच्या मिच्छे दारो सर्वालो कामो नंदो कृष्टे सुप्रभु तन रक्त मिच्छी कोन्नट्टी संगमुन यवरु चेयुदरो वारे गंजूलु Yavaru chiregaro vaare danyulu Varalu kamme vaarini Yavaru chiregaro vaare danyulu Varalu kamme vaarini
Sisters' choice Twenty eight Erve endo part padukinta Twenty eight When we walk with the Lord English songs, song padukuntam Erve endo parta twenty eighth song
When we walk with the Lord In the light of his soul What glory sets on our head But he do his good will He awaits in the sting And with all moving trust and obey Trust and obey but there's no other way To be happy in Jesus But to trust and obey Not a shadow can rise Not a cloud in the sky But his smile quickly drives it away Not a doubt or a fear Not a sign or a cure Then I might need trust and obey Trust and obey but there's no other way To be happy in Jesus But to trust and obey Not a burden we bear Not a sorrow we share But a pardon that leads me to pain Not a grief or a loss Not a cross or a cross But it's best if we trust and obey Trust and obey but there's no other way To be happy in Jesus But to trust and obey But we never can prove The delights of his love And it all under on the willing But the beauty he shows And the joy he bestows Are for them who will trust and obey Trust and obey but there's no other way To be happy in Jesus But to trust and obey When in fellowship see We will sit at his feet And we walk by his side in the way What he says we will do When he stands we will go Then we are only trust and obey Trust and obey but there's no other way To be happy in Jesus But to trust and obey
Boys Ninth Ninth song padukuntam Tomudo part padukuntam Ee tomudo part paade samyamlo Muro chernam paare tapudu Bible neti partha bible palak Muro chernam matram bible eti partha Tomudo part padukuntam
Maatlaadhumu jeeva mugala deva Jeevanadini pravahi pade deva Maatlaadhumu jeeva mugala deva Jeevanadini pravahi pade deva Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Needha masasamu naache yamaina Sangatulano chutchu nadlu kanunu teruva Needha masasamu naache yamaina Sangatulano chutchu nadlu kanunu teruva Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Needha sudu alakinchu chunnadaya Aatga nimbu priya esu prabhuva Needha sudu alakinchu chunnadaya Aatga nimbu priya esu prabhuva Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Needha sudu alakinchu chunnadaya Needha sudu alakinchu chunnadaya Needha sudu alakinchu chunnadaya Deyko maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Maatlaadhumu jeeva mugala deva Jeevanadini pravahi pade deva Maatlaadhumu jeeva mugala deva Jeevanadini pravahi pade deva Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma Deyko maatlaaduma Neevay maatlaaduma Neemellani swaramu venipenchuma
Shall we pray?
Pradhana iskna
If possible, kneel down and close your eyes
Saadhamai te mokale indi And me kanu muskali siniga manu chestu
Our loving heavenly father
Ma prema galapriya parlo kapthandri
We thank thee for this precious time That was given unto us
Ma kanugreenchina twenty Ee ka prashastamaena samyamukarukku Me ku vandhanal chelistunna
Lord, we pray for everyone Who is gathered here Who are precious to you
Prabha nikentho amulemaena twenty Nee prajalu ekada cherevachina Pratyvakkarikorukku me sani dlo pradhistu
Lord, they are all precious to you Because thou hast Paid a heavy price And redeemed them with thy precious blood
Prabha varantho varani kentho amulemaena Varindu kante Ne ventho bhali amulema varikorukku chellinchavu Ni eka prashastaraktamtho varani vimochinchavu
Thou art a God who loves them
Ni varani preeminchay deva vaynandukku me ku vandhanal
Lord, we thank thee for thy love
Me prema korake me ku vandhanal chelistunna
We thank thee for thy grace
Me kroppakorake me ku vandhanal chelistunna
Because of thy love and because of thy grace Thou art speaking to us again and again
Me premanu bati me kropanu bati Meer maatho marala marala maatlaaduthunna Randhunu bati me ku vandhanal
Thank thee for thy house
Me enti korukku me ku vandhanal
We thank thee for the teaching which is in thy house
Ni entilona twenty bodanu bati me ku vandhanal chelistunna
We thank thee for thy precious word Which thou hast given unto us in our own languages
Ma santamathru baashalno meer ma kanugreenchina twenty Jeemagali nee maatukorake me ku vandhanal
Lord, we thank thee We are able to understand Through the language which thou hast given unto us
Meer ma kichna twenty baashanu bati Me maatala ardhansesko galigananduke me ku vandhanal chelistunna
Lord, we thank thee for the families Whom thou hast given unto us
Ma kichna twenty kutumbalunu bati me ku vandhanal chelistunna
Thank thee for this greater family of God Which thou hast given unto us
Meer ma kanugreenchina twenty Ee athipeda deva nee kutumbamukarukku me ku vandhanal chelistunna
Lord bless this time we spend in thy presence
Prabha me sani dlo me garupi samyam devanikaranaga chendy
Lord, control our wandering thoughts
Parade ma talampolna meer katadu chendy
Meet our needs
Maavseratul teechandi
Lord, help us to make a decision As we spend this time
Ee samyam me sani dlo garuputhundaga Sarayana tirmanam tiskunna vedangamak sahayam chendy
Bless everyone
Pratyvarani devinchendy
Bless thy word
Me maatala devinchendy
Give us thy grace to share thy word
Ni maatalu panchukunatalo ni kroppamak kanugreenchendy
We pray with thanksgiving in Jesus precious name
Kritagana taastutula to esu prashastanamunu pradhistu namu thanri
Amen I thank the Lord for this opportunity The Lord has given to me To be here this afternoon
Ee madhyanakala samyamandu ekada unnaanani kee prabhu na kanugreenchina Ee ka avkashani bati deva nee vandhanal chelistunna
And it is a joy to have fellowship with you
Me to koda kalisi sahavasani kalige unnaanam nakentho anandam
Lord, it is a joy to see all the young people who are here
Yavanasthalandhar ekada cherevachina meelandhar nee chodam nakentho santosham
And there are many other young people like me also So I'm happy to see them also
Naklaag entho mandi yavanasthalunna ra varanu gora chodam nakentho santosham
When we have gathered like this
Ila manam koodukunna apudu
What is that? What is the purpose for which we have gathered?
Manam o illa koodukodani kee gala udesham enti
God has a purpose in bringing you here that you should understand
Deva dekada meelantiskaradumlo deva nee ka udesham undaade meer ardhanseskovali
You could have spent this time somewhere else
Inka ekadana ee samyam meer garupochu
But you made a decision to come here
Kan ekada raavandaki meer ka tirmanam deskonochar
I feel God has brought you here
Neen anukuntana deva de manal ekada tiskonochar
And you have come
Meer ochar
So after coming here
Ekada gochina taravata
What is the purpose For which we are going to hear the message?
Ekada udesham enti deni kosam deva nee vaakani manu vena botunna
So God has a word for you
Deva de nee korukka maatatechadu
And when the Lord speaks to us
Yepreite prabhu manatho maatlaadathadu
We should respond to God's word
Deva nee maatiki manu sarayana rithulapratispandinchali
We may take many The notes Of the messages what we hear
Manam vinetu ante sandesham gurinchina chala visyal rasukuntu undachu
It is good to take notes
Manchidi rasukodam manchidi
It is good to go through that notes little later
Taravata yepreite samyam dorekina apudu Arasukuna visyalu marala talapoidam chalamanchidi
Prayerfully you can read that again
Pradhana porukunga marala danisadavachu meedu
It will be a blessing to you
Adi me ka aashirvadakaram
More than that
Antakamenchii
When we are hearing the word of God
Yepreite manan deva nee maatavintunna apudu
I give you one counsel how to listen to the word of God And accept that in our life When we are hearing the word of God not later on now
Neen me ka halachin yaptan deva nee maatavintunna apude Deva nee maatala ardhanseskoone da nee manu angikarinchali ipude taravata kadu
I am working in a company
Neer company la panjastunna
And I used to undergo Many days of training programs in various places
Chala chala stalalalo ee ka training programs keltu untanu
And I have to attend those training classes
Vaatannitki koda tarpeedechay taragatel kattanavali
Sometime it may be one day or two days or three days Five days, two weeks also
Konisarli vakarozu, rendrezlu, ayyarozlu Okerendu varal koda batach
And lot of notes they will give
Pal chala notes istaru visyal chappadu
And we have to write down many things
Chala visyalu vaatun rasukovali
So we used to write
Rasukuntu untanu
But I made it a practice To do when I attend the training program
Yepreite a tarpeede karakraman kattanavatano
When they give a big notebook
Chala padda notebook ichinapudu
I write whatever I understand
Neen ardhanseskoone anta rasukuntanu
But the last page
Kan aakari page lo
It is very very special for me
Adi chala chala pramukkema indraakku
When I find something very useful for me
Nak edana chala pramukkema indi ali neen anukunnapudu
Where I should ponder And put it into my practice
Neen o talaposi da nee na abhyasamulun tiskunraavali neen anukunna edana unte
I will write those points alone in the last page
Iga na santam maatalo neen aakari page lo aviraskuntanu
It may be five lines only
Adi kevlo ayydu line lo nee undachu
But very important for me which At that time when I am in the class I decide this I will follow
Kan neen ak chala pramukkema indi ali neen a taragatel lo unnapudu Neen niraninchkunna nee viti neen kachitanga abbesincharan niraninchkunna gavati Pratekanga rasukuntanu
This is where I am going wrong I should set myself right so I used to write down
Ee visyalu neen a tapujestunna nu Deen neen a sargeeskovali neen a nee edaita anukuntanu Dan rasukuntanu
This is the area where I have to improve
Ee visyalu neen inkavruthipondaali
So like that I used to write down a few points Which are very very important for me
Kaavati aaritiga nakku chala chala pramukkema veyvaita untayo Vaatni konni points rasukuntanu
And I make a sincere attempt to follow them consciously
Neen entho jagratega vaatni avalamenchadani kee Edha ardhanga prayatan chalagatika
I am serious about that
Da nee gurinchandho tevaranga prayatnista
And I want to make use of that which I have learnt in that training program
Neen a aeku tarpeedechay taragatel neen edaita nerchkunna nu Da nee abbesincha visyalu chala tevaranga prayatnista
So my advice to you is
Ipune me kichchay salaahay intantay
When you are listening to the word of God
Yepreite me deva nee maatavintunna ra
There may be an inner voice telling you God speaking to you This is where you are going wrong This is where you have to sit right This is what is important for you
Lopalanichi deva nee swaramu neetam maatlaaduthunnu untu untundi Deva nee vaakani netapudu Ee visyalu neetapi potunnu Ee visyalu neetargeeskovali Ee visyalu neen inkavruthipondaali deva neetam maatlaaduthuntaadu
So it is not the physical word or the voice which you hear But the inner voice which you hear as you are seated in the presence of the Lord
Deva nee sani dlo meer kurshanunnapudu Ila baitaki vena badhe ee swaramto partuga Meer vinedi lopalanichi prabhu meetam maatlaaduthunna swarami koda vintar
So God will definitely speak to you
Deva de kachitanga meetam maatlaadathadu
So be conscious about that voice which you hear today
Kan eedinana meer vinetu ante a swarami gurinchchala jagratva inchendy
Whether you take full notes or not Note down those points Your decisions What you will take it seriously and follow
Meer mattav rasukuntara rasukorana telidu kan Meer edaita avalamenchal anukuntanu ra ee sandesham inchedaita nerchkol anukunna ra Chala tevaranga vaat gurinchch jagratva inch rasukundi
And you are going to write down In the house of God In the presence of God when you are hearing the voice of God
Meer yepraivotunna rantae deva nee sani dlo Deva de neetam maatlaaduthundaga Appudu me ri maatal rasukuntanu
In the house of God you are writing it down
Deva nee entilorastunna
So God will definitely help you To follow those what you have written Decisions what you have taken
Kaavati deva de meer rasukunna twenty a visyalu Leantem me re tirmanal deskunna ra vaatni Avalamenchadani ke deva de me sahayam chendy
It is not what we hear and understand and know In your mind But it is what you put it into practice which matters
Ee di aslanu visyalu ente ee di manam gurthinchal visyalu ente Ni vinedi lekabote ekada edaita telisukuntunnavo anedu kadu kan Ni deni abbesistunnavo entho varakoni abhyasamulun ki tiskunavastunnavo le chala pramukkema
I may know everything about swimming
Inka chala edadam gurinchay nakku anta telisukuntachu
I would have read many books
Neen chala postkalsay unduachu
How to swim, everything
Pratiti eta nee shastram gurinchina nakku pootika delisundachu
If I am asked to write an exam I can pass I can get hundred marks also
Na pariksha raaimantey a eta gurinchay vandaki vanda markli neetechvogal
But can I swim?
Kan itelisinanta matram nee edakal
I can't swim
Neen edalenu
I have to practice
Neen eta anedu abbesincharan practice chendy
What I have learnt it becomes a part of my life
Neen edaita nerchkunna naa nee naa jeetanu ka bagama indi
I don't need the books when I am in the water
Neen nelalavunnapudu nakku postkavasran ledu
It has become a part of my life, practice
Adi naa jeetanu ka bagama indi adi practice aipendi
So same way
Aaritiga ne
You should understand And then put it into practice what you hear
Kaavati ni edaita vintunnavo dan ardhanseskoone da nee abhyasamulun tiskunraavali
And this afternoon session
Ipudu ee madhyanakala samyamlo ee taragatel
We are going to have two messages
Rendu vartha manal manu kalige untanu
Not very long
Chala padda kadu
Because my message will be always short
Na message lani chala takko chinnavga untay
If I speak for fifteen minutes He will speak for fifteen minutes So I speak only fifteen minutes
Ankel padiyannimchal neen padiyannimchal jappali
Half an hour message
Half an hour aipu
So don't find fault with me
Kaavati naalavu lapunkanugunadu
Poodugaa jappiadanti A long message it is, don't feel bad about it, no?
Na gurinchch chaduka ankodin tapal poodu sandesham ichchadu
Idhar kalsi
Idhari galpkovali
Kalsi, long message
Long message
So I am sorry I am not able to speak in Telugu
Telugu lo neen maatlaadu lepothu naan me sheminchali
I would love to speak in Telugu I can speak but you will start laughing only If I speak Telugu
Neen Telugu lo maatlaadu laan neen anta istapadu tanu kan Neen maatlaantam meer andar navtaru
So I am comfortable in English So I am comfortable in English.
English lo neen akshavkarayantante.
And I am sure many of you are comfortable with English only.
Neen anukundana meelo chala mandu gora English thane chala shavkarayunga untande.
You know why?
Endu gadesa.
When you were born, you were calling mommy daddy only, naina, atla gada, mama, though daddy mommy.
Endu kandhi me putinapudu mommy daddy an vilistha untar naina amma an gada.
So our mother tongue is still English only.
Ah, manam matravasha Englisha Telugu.
Telugu is a state language.
Eh, rastra basha adi Telugu.
And Hindi is a national language.
Hindi anedhi rajabasha.
Mother ba- mother tongue?
Matravasha.
English only.
English eh.
So you are very comfortable.
Miru English thane chala shavkarayame.
And also understand, God is speaking to you in two languages so that you will understand very clearly, repetition, same message repeatavthadi.
Gurtinchandi, gurtinchandi devu rendu bhashalalu meetha maatlathadunadu inkabaaga ardhangeeskuntara nee daanee marla marla jettunadu.
You should not miss any point, no? So English, ardhanga, ardhanga, if you have not understood, Telugu logu.
English ardhanga akavate Telugu lo inandi.
Next time one more translation we will have in Hindi also.
Inko saare ochina apudu Hindi kodavadutha.
So you, so that you can understand very well, no doubt at all.
Kaavate manam chala spastanga ardhangeeskuntam sandesham lekunna.
So this, uh, both the sessions are going to be not a deep Bible study.
Yedudu baga Bible patlam deepga chedungada lotga dyananjedungada kanee.
I feel this is not the time.
Yedi samayam kadu.
So we are going to see something very, very practical.
Chala chala practical velo ante abhyasam chegaliga vedanavla manam maatlathadu.
And I feel that is very, very important for your life, for your spiritual life.
Neen anukundunna nu yedimi atme jeevita nee chala chala pramukkema indi.
We are going to read one verse from the word of God.
Devu lekanu bagam inch manam ka vachanam chadavotunam.
Ephesians chapter five.
Ephesial krasinapatrika ayyadha adhamu.
Ephesians chapter five.
Ephesial krasinapatrika ayyadha adhamu.
Verse sixteen.
Padahara vachinam.
Ephesians chapter five and verse sixteen.
Padahara vachinam.
Fifteen, sixteen, rendu kodu.
Padihayano padaharo.
We will read all together.
Daichesandaram kalshi chavutam.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Padihayano padaharo vachinamlo ayyadha adhamu Ephesial krasinapatrika.
We will read loudly.
Biggaraga chavutam.
We will see how loudly you are reading.
Miru entho biggaraga chavutaram enchodala anukuntanu.
Loudly, clearly.
Spastanga biggaraga. Dinamalu chedaviganuka miru samayamunu poniyeka sadvinyogam cheskonchu agnanulavale kaka, gnanulavale nadchkonatlu jagrataga chuchkunadi.
Redeeming time.
Samayani sadvinyogan jescodam.
It is not just making use of time.
Samayani opayogunchkodam gaudun sadvinyogan jescodam.
It is something little more than that.
Antakamenchindi yedi.
We should understand this life and the days of our life in this world are given by God.
Manam ardhangeeskavasnavishyam entante mana jeevita mo mana dinala ne devanichetman kevadne.
It is God who has given us this life and it is God who is giving us every day.
Dinamo, prati dinamo devu de manakistunadu jeevita manedhi devu de manakichindi.
So we should not waste this time what God has given to us.
Devu de manakichinatvanti yekka samayani manam radachesko kodu.
We should redeem the time.
Daanee vidipinchikavali, opayogunchikavali samayani.
What does it mean?
Dan ardhamenti.
We have to rescue or take it seriously, pay a price and then use that time.
Manam o vidipinchie entha velachalinchie a samayani manavopayogunchkavali.
The time given can be used anyway as you like.
Yevadina samayamu neesthavachina tellainavadu.
Nobody is controlling your time also.
Yavaru nee samayani nientrincharu kodu.
It is left to you how to use the time.
Adi neeku matram vedaavadinu velavadukuntavo.
But you have to redeem that time, invest in that time what God has given to you.
Kanee ni aimchalan ante yevadina samayani vidipinchali a samayani pettavadi ga pettali.
Because the time given will pass away.
Endu kandhi devu dechna isamayamo adi datipotununtundi.
If yesterday is gone, it is gone forever.
Neen ati dinamo aipoyinantu adi keppadika aipinatle.
So that is why it is very precious, we cannot get back that day what we have lost.
Andu ke yedi chala pramukkema indi manam kolpaina a dinani marla tirikitechkollem.
Someone has said like this.
Akerela chapparu.
Yesterday is history.
Ninnaa chiretra.
Tomorrow is a mystery.
Reppadhi ardhangaani di.
Today is a present or a gift given to us, today it is available.
Eerozdi manakandu vortlo undi.
So we have to plan the time properly.
Kaavate manam.
Prioritizing what we need to do.
Kaavate manam o samayani sariga pranalki veshkoni aimchali yedhi pramukkema indi daaniprakaram.
So every one of us here whether young or old, we have twenty-four hours time given to us.
Yavanasthalanu undi rudhulagandhi cheruvachinu pathi okkarike kodu yerevinaalukantala samayam yevadina.
So prioritize and plan the time which is given to you.
Neekyovadnatvanti samayanki aimchaliyani yedhi pramukkema indho daaniprakaram pranalkleskavali.
First let us see for this physical body what is required.
First motamodhiti ga yekka boutika dehaniki yeme ausarama nee chodam.
This body needs sleep.
Yidehaniki nitra ausar.
If you don't sleep.
Neen kalkan nitra vavakvate.
You know what will happen?
Yemavatna delsa?
Anybody knows if you don't sleep?
Yer kandhi delsa nitra vavakvate emavatni?
Hmm? You will die, do you know that?
Chachi vavatam, sanipavatam, telsa meeku.
If you don't sleep, you will die.
Nitra vavakvate chani vavatam.
So it is a necessity that you have to sleep.
Manam nitra vodu manedhi athya ausar maindi.
So this is what I am going to tell you, it is very easy to follow, sleep, sleep, sleep well.
Yedene me chappalan anukuntunnu chala telikendi din avalamenchadu nitra vondi baga nitra vondi.
If you don't sleep, you will die, please sleep, we want you to live.
Nitra vavakvate chani vavatar daiches nitra vondi mir brathkalan korukuntanu.
Ekka da?
Ekka da?
Here?
Ekka da?
So first in your life, fix that time for your sleep.
Motamodhiti ga nee jeevita mo nitra vodu kaka samayani kattainch.
Yer kuda itla chappal edugada, every now chappayara ekka da? Oh, you are very happy, no? Chala happy andru, oh, villay chala happy.
Villay chala santoshanunatunna.
So fix the time for your sleep first out of the twenty-four hours, how many hours you will sleep?
Motamodhiti ga nitra vodanike kaka samayani kattainch neerevinaalukantala enikantala nitra vodunna.
Minimum you need around seven hours of sleep.
Takkala takkavante yedukantala nitra ausar manadehan.
So fix that sleep when you will go to bed and when you will rise up from bed.
Ne eppudu nitra vavala eppu nitra ninchileavala kaka samayani kattainch.
So fix that time, I will go to sleep on so-and-so time, I will get up on so-and-so time.
A kaka samayani kattainch go neenu palana time lo nitra, nitra vodanu palana time lo nitra leeshta.
Today what is the problem with the young people?
Ipudu yavanasthalatchna samasyantante yedina.
I am hundred percent sure none of you have got fixed time for sleeping.
Neen notiki noorizatand jappagala nu meelo yavaru kodu samayani nitra vodanike kaka samayani kattainch.
I may go ten o'clock to sleep, eleven o'clock to sleep, twelve o'clock, one o'clock.
Padigantalo, padukantalo, pannanantalo, eppudo nitra vavatan.
And when will you get up?
Yepal leeshta.
Anytime I like.
Nak esthavachinu apal leeshta.
Seven o'clock, eight o'clock, nine o'clock, ten o'clock, I have seen young people getting up at twelve o'clock also.
Yedukantalki, envidukantalki, padigantalki inkakondu mandi yavanasthalu neen dhushanu, pannanintik nitra leeshtaru.
So, but it is not right.
Kanee adi sarayindi kadu.
Your body should be tuned to go to sleep at a particular time and your body should be tuned to get up at a particular time.
Kaka nirneetha samayanki, nitra vodaniki, alagani nirneetha samayam nitra leavodaniki, nee dehanika alvad chayali.
Today what are you doing?
Yedina neen jessuno.
You don't have any work.
Yempani ledhuni ku.
So you have something in your hand.
Ne chetala otundi.
It is very close to you, very dear to you.
Adi neekantha priyama indi.
I can't be without that.
Adi lekundana neen undalina salu.
Then, then, please don't use your cell phones before sleeping, okay?
Nitra vayamundu daiches me cell phone lo vadu.
It is very bad for health and mental health antan.
Adi.
You will not get sleep also it seems, so you start using the cell phone, you don't get sleep, if daddy mommy asks, I am not getting sleep, so I am with my cell phone.
Kaavate a nitra vayamundu a phone vodamane chala chedala vatu adi manasika arogim godu, arogimmeda kodu chala prabhavatun jasthnde, ammanan adukuntara entha se phone dhushtanu, nagu nitra ratle edhineen phone dhushtanu.
So first fix your sleeping time, ten o'clock or eleven o'clock, not later than that, eleven o'clock.
Kaavu kaka samayani kattainch padigantala, padukantala, antakantae kodu, padukantala.
Keep this fellow also somewhere out.
Ah, yevetinu kodu ekka kodu doran vadasindi.
Your closest friend, intimate friend.
Ah, me kati sani hitudai netwantisnehitudu.
Ah, hell phone, keep it away. Hell phone.
Hell phone.
Hell phone, keep it away.
Ah, keep it away. Daan doranga betta.
If you want, put it in silent, close all your net or whatever it is, close.
Anittini bondhijesidoranga betta.
So if you want to sleep well.
Neen kalka baga nitra vavalante.
You have to keep this phone away, then go to sleep.
Yifone ne doranga betta apu nitra vav.
And get up early in the morning.
Odekalamay nitra leesaravata.
So early, early morning means what?
Odekalamay ante enti, poddu poddu neant.
I, my advice is, before the sun rises, you should get up.
Na salaahayintante suridu odeyunchakumunde nee leavali.
If you ask me what time I get up.
Nannadikita neen nee samayanki leesantante.
I am up by five thirty.
Neen ayyudunna rakilashtan.
Five fifteen itself, I'll, I'll be awake.
Ayyu padihayani ke, ayyumbavake neenu melkuntanu.
Before the alarm goes, I'll be up.
Alarm mogayundene neen leeshtan.
So whatever time I may go to sleep if some problem is there, morning I am getting up, this body is well tuned to get up early in the morning.
Kaavate samayam kodiga nitra veta pratati taaynapadikoda odekalam maatram alarm mogedani ke mundeleeshtan endu kandhi naa dehamu a samayani nitra leavodani ke alvad chayvadi.
So you go to bed on time.
Neen samayani ke kaavatni, samayani ke nitra vav.
And try to sleep for seven hours.
Yedukantalo nitra vodan praitunjayundi.
And get up early in the morning.
Odekalamay nitra leavandi.
So next important thing where you spend your time is.
Taravata pramukkema navishyam nee samayani indru gadapali ante.
Gaduputhunaru, ipudu, it is very important, it may be your studies.
Ni, niyaka chadula unna chadu.
It is compulsory.
Adi tapanisari.
Or it may be your work.
Adi ni pannalaga vachu.
You cannot avoid that.
Vaatni, ni vodu kadu angale.
Oh, up to ten to twelve hours or thirteen hours, you will be in studies or in your work.
Pati leda pannanagantalo, padumudagantalo varaku ni chadula gani, ni pannalaga unta.
It depends on your school or what a college or the place of work, your travel, all that is there and when you come home, you have to study also.
Engadi ni pannijesesstalamme dadarpaaduntu nee schoola, collegea, entha doram prayanunchali, velochin taravata kodu adi chadutunta.
So it is important that you are successful in that also, in studies as well as in your work.
Niyaka chadulonu alagani pannonu, ni vijayavantudu kadaanika adi chala pramukkema.
I want to read one verse.
Kaka vachinani neen chadavalan anukuntanu.
Proverbs chapter twenty-two.
Samitalagandamiravayrindha adhamu.
Verse twenty-nine.
Yervaitomidavachinam.
Read loudly all together please.
Yervairindha adhamu yervaitomidavachinam biggaraga chavudam daiches.
Proverbs chapter twenty-two and verse twenty-nine.
Yervairindha adhamu yervaitomidavachinam samitalagandam. Tanapani lo nipunata galavani chuchitiva, alpulainavari yeduta kadu, wardu rajalayedutane neeluchunnu.
See as thou a diligent man in his work.
Tanapani lo naipunyata galikunvaanju seva.
Very diligent, very careful, very serious about the work.
Wardu entho sraddha galikunvaadu tanapani gurinch entho jagratavainchavadu naipunyata galikunvaadu.
It may be your studies.
Adi nee chadula gavachu.
Or it may be a work.
Ni pani gavachu.
Be careful, be serious, are very sincere.
Jagrataga undu, tevaranga shreemunchu, edaaradanga pannji.
I tell three words about this.
Moodu maatali epandini gurinchie.
If you want to be successful in your studies or in your work.
Niyaganika ni chadulagaani le ante ni pannulagaani, ni job jeshi daggarani vijayavantudu kavalante.
Be sincere.
Edaaradanga undu.
Be serious.
Tevaranga shreemunchu.
Be systematic.
Entho padathiprakaram pannji.
And you will be successful.
Apu nee vijayavantara vathu.
So the world is looking for some faithful people.
Lokamo namakastalo kosam edhur justanu.
Why not you be a faithful person in your work?
Ni pannalani venidukka namakastru ka kodu.
You should be very hardworking.
Manu, ni chala kastapadthanu vekika unnadchu.
Even now I am working.
Neen kodu ipudu pannjasthunna.
I work hard.
Neen chala kastapadthanu.
I don't take sick leave unless I am sick, really sick.
Neen nejamuga balakhinu naithene tapa, sick leave thiskun.
My sick leave is all going waste.
Mahanai, sick leaves ani kodu wasteai vathavali.
I don't take sick leave and attend youth retreat.
Sick leave thiskuni youth retreat kattandavali.
I will take some other leave, not sick leave.
Neen yere edo leave thiskuntan, sick leave ga.
So I work very hard, really hard.
Neenu chala kastapadi pannjastan, nejamga.
For me five day a week but Saturday also I will be working.
Na nak u ayyarozulu pani aitha senvaran kodu pannjastan.
So I should be sincere, I should be diligent in work what I am doing.
कवट नैनो चाला एदार्धम्म गा जागर्ता तो स्रद्धतो ना पन्ने चेयालि
Your studies also
नी चदूलकोड
Not waiting for the last moment to study and trying to get the question paper leaked out here, there
येदो लास्ट चेटचेवरे समयानी कोचिसरकी, पुस्तकालानी देरगेसी, एवराना क्वेश्चन पेपर लीक जेकुन्डर नाकेमन दोरुतो देम
Final preparation is how to copy in the examination
चेटचेवरे सिद्धपाट अल्लून्डन्दे, एग्जामले अल्लाका पीकोट्ठालि
You are not faithful like that, no, you should work hard
नी चाला कस्तपड्ड पन्जेयालि
You should work hard and your studies, you should be the best in your studies
नी चदूल्लो कोड नी मुंदुन्नालि चाला
It is possible for you
आदि निक साध्यम
So, these twelve hours, thirteen hours, fourteen hours will go in your studies
ई पन्ने गण्टल, पदमुड़ गण्टल, पद्नाल गण्टल, नी चदूला एलिपोते
Where are you going to college?
इनकेल्टलो कॉलेजकी
Where are you going to school?
स्कूल केन्द्गेल्टलो
Why?
एंदुक
Ah, studies
चदूको डान
That is your business
आदि नी पनी
There is no other business
इन्गा वेरे पन्यम लेद
नो, अटूटू चूडाला, फ्रेंड्स तोतिरगाला, ए मोधु, no, no, it is for studies
अन्नी चोडाले फ्रेंड्स तो देरगालि, एलान्ट्वें बेटको अधु, चदू कोसम एल्लू
Ah, when I joined my son in one college in Chennai
अंगलो अल्ला कुमारनी, चैन्नालो कॉलेज जाइ Engineering college Engineering college जाइ
First day all parents are called
मोदर रोज अंदर तालिदंडन पिल्सर
And the chairman will give a speech
चेयरमैन ओका संदेशमिस्तो उन्न
He said, "You have sent your children to this college to study"
अतन जेप्पेर नी, मी पिल्लल्ले मेरी कॉलेज केन्द्गोम्बिस्नर अंडे चदूकोडन
I will take care of them
नैन वान जूस्कुन्डन
I will be strict with them
नैन वार्ता चाला कटिनंगा उन्ड
I will not allow any indiscipline, I will not allow them to go out also
नैन वानी बाइटिकम्पेडंगानी, अकमंगा उन्डानिकानी, ए मात्र अप्कोन
Whatever they want, I will give it
वार्की एम कावला रिस्ता
Even haircut, they did not go out, they can have haircut here, free haircut
हेरकट गोड एक्रे जेपिस्तन, बाइटिकल्डान केले, फ्रीगान
And you know what he said?
इन्गाय जेप्पेर देस
This is not a matchmaking center
इदि सम्मानाले वेतकुनेर गादु, स्थलम्म गादु
You have sent your children to study, let them study, I will be very strict
मी पिल्लल्ले चदूकोडान किकड़ बम्बिचर, नैन आविष्यम चाला गट्टिकुन्डन, चदूकोडानके
College or school is for studies, nothing else
कॉलेजल, स्कूलल, चदूकोडानके इन्क देन कोसम गादु
Be diligent in your work
नी पन्लो चाला स्रद्ध गलिनु
Study well
भाग कस्तपड्ड चदू
So, sleep is important, your study or your work is very, very important
कवट नित्र चाला प्रामक्यमय इंदि, नी चदू, नी पनी चाला, चाला प्रामक्यमय
When you are sleeping, sleep well
नी नित्रबोधन नबुड़ भाग नित्रबो
When you are studying, study well
नी चदिवेट अपुरू भाग चद
Everything you should do well only, no
प्रतिदिन नी चाला भाग चेयल्गद
Everything should be done very well by you
प्रतिदिन कोड नी चाता चाला चक्कगा चेयबडालि
Now
इपुरू
Balance time is there
इन्गा मिगलन टाइम उन्दे, समय
The free time, no
Ah, आदि फ्री टाइम अंडर
Ah, you can spend in whichever way you want
इन्गा नी इस्तमाचन नट नी वानी गडपाच्छु
So, this time only is very important, how you are going to spend your time, this time
ई समयमो चाला प्रामक्यमय, नी समयानी नी एला गडपोतन
This time decides who you are and what is the purpose for which you are living in this world
ई समयम देनी निरणेस्न नट नी वेवरो, नी देनी कोसम ई भूममें जीविस्न नाने दानी निरणेस्न
You may say many things, time pass, why are you doing that? Time pass and time
येन्यास्न नट टाइम पास जेस्त, अलग गडिपेस्त ना कालन
Time pass, just like that, no, I will do whatever I want, whatever I like, I will do
नाक इस्तमानी जेस्त ना, नाक नचिन्दे जेस्त नान्ट
But remember as a child of God
कानी गुर्तिंचन्दि, देवनी बिटगा
What does the word of God say, how to pass time?
देवनी वाक्यमयम अंजप्तुन्दि, समयानी एला गडपाली
First Peter, chapter one
मध्यपेत्र पत्रिका ओकटा अध्यायम
Verse seven
एढ़ अच्छन
We will read altogether loudly
अंदरम्गाल्सी बिगरगा चौधम ई माटर
First Peter, chapter one and verse seventeen
मध्यपेत्र पत्रिका ओकटा अध्यायम पदिहेड़ अच्छन
And if we, we will read altogether, and if we call on the father
शवतम्म गट्टी तीर्प
चदूंडि Ah, pass the time of your sojoning here in fear
मेर परदेशलाई उन्न अंता कालमो भयमतो गडपुडि
So, the pass the time, time pass, how to time pass?
एला गडपाली समयानी, कालानी
In the fear of the Lord
देवनी भयमतो गडपाली
So, the Lord is there, wherever you are
नी उन्न ए स्थलम्म उन्न अक्कर देवड़ उन्न अडु
God knows, God he sees, God he, God hears
देवड़की तेल्सु, देवड़ चूस्तनार, देवड़ विन्टाड
Nothing is hidden from him
आयन निंची मरगैन देदी उन्ड
Your parents may not know, but God knows
मी तालिदंडल तेलिक पोछुकान, देवड़ तेल्सु
Parents may not see, but God sees
तालिदंडल चोडकु पोछुकान, देवड़ चूस्तद
Parents may not hear, but God hears
तालिदंडल वेनकपोछुकाने, देवड़ विन्टाड
God is everywhere, he knows
अन्नी चोटला उन्नार, सर्वांत्रयम आया तेल्सु
Even your motives of your heart, intentions of your heart, he knows
नी रोदै उद्देशालु, नी अक्का आलोचन्लानी, आयनक भाग तेल्सु
Because time is very valuable
समय चाला प्रामक्यमय इंदि विर्वैंदि कवट
This free time you have to pass in the fear of the Lord
योका काली समयानी, देवनी भयमतो गडपाली
And in other words, we can say, it should be controlled by God
इन्को माटले जप्पलन्टे, इदि देवनी चेतन नियंत्रिंचबडालि
No, no, I am free, I have freedom, I will do whatever I want, you can't say that
लेद लेद नैनो चाला काली टाइम उन्दे, नाइस त्वचन नट नैन गडप्त अला चप्ले
If you are a child of God, that time should be controlled by God
नी देवनी बिटु वाइते, आ समयम कच्चतंग, देवनी चेतन नियंत्रिंचबडालि
It should be handed over in the, in Lord's hand
आदि देवनी चेतिका पकिंचबडालि
That time should be handed over in God's hand
देवनी चेतिला पकिंचबडिंदा गुन्डालि
In Psalm thirty-one and verse fifteen
केटलगरणम् मुपयावट अध्यायम पदिहेन अच्छन
It says, "My times are in thy hand, hand over your times in God's hand"
ना कालगतुल नी वशमलो उन्न अंडे अक्कड
So, your time, especially the free time, should be handed over and should be controlled by God
कवट ए प्रतेकिंगा नी काली समयमो, देवनी चेतन नियंत्रिंचबडालि
So, in this free time, there are many activities you do
ई काली समयमल, मेर चाला पन्ल जेस्त उन्डर
There are many places where you go
नी चाला चाला स्थलालक वेल्थ उन्ड
You do and go
नी चेस्ताव, वेल्थ
And also, there are many things which you see and which you speak also
नी चूसे विष्णु चाला उन्टे, माटलाड विष्णु कोड चाला उन्टे
There are many things which are in your heart and what you hear
नी मनसलो चाला विष्णु उन्टे, नी चाला विष्णु विन्टू उन्ड
So, we have to be careful about all these areas
ई विष्णु अन्नीटलो चाला जागर्ता गाउन्ड
There are some entry points which you should be very careful about
मन, मन देहमलो, entry points उन्न अंडे, लोपलिक तीस्कुने, ज्ञानम तीस्कुने अंडे विष्णु उन्न, आठ विष्णु चाला जार्त
There are some gates, eye gate is there, ear gate is there
कटिक द्वाराल उन्न, कंटी द्वारम उन्दि, चेवी द्वारम उन्दि
Through eyes and through ears, many things go and settle down in your heart or in your mind
चेवले उन्ड, अलग कंटी द्वारा, अनेक विष्णु, नी मनसलोक वेल्ले अक्कड़ कोचुन्ड
And those things finally become actions in your life
आ विष्णुले, चेवरिगा नी जीवितमला पन्लावत
And those actions become a character for you
आ पन्ले, नी वेत्तितम अवत
That makes up your personality totally
आदि चेवरिगा नी वेत्तितम अवत नदि
So, you have to be very careful where you go and what you do
कवट नी एक्रेक वेल्थ उन्न, एम चेस्तन, अनेक बाटला चाला जार्त गाउन्ड
You should be careful what you see and what you speak
नी चूस्तुन नेंटे, माटलाडुन नेंटे, अनेक बाटला जार्त गाउन्ड
You should be careful about what you hear and what goes into your heart
नी एम विन्टुन्न, नी रोदैमला केमल्तुन्न, अनेक बाटला जागर्ता गाउन्ड
One principle which you should follow about this free time is
ई काली समयानी गुरिंचि नी अवलम्बिन्साल्सन ओकसोत्रम नियमम अंडे
Never be idle, but keep yourself busy always
एपुरू कोड कालीगा उन्ड दु, नी एदोक पन्लो नी निमाकनम जेस्को
Don't be idle
कालीगा उन्ड दसल पन्यमी लेकुन्डा उन्ड
You should be active always, you should be busy, keep yourself busy
चुरुकुगा उन्डालि, नी अंतर नी एदोक पन्लो, निमाकनम आयुन्ड
In my life, I thank God because I am able to be busy in many things
ना जीवितम पाटला, नन्नु बट्टी देवनिको वान्दनाल चेलिस्तन, इन्दिकंडे, नैन चाला विष्णु नन्नु नैनो, तीर्कले कुन्डा जेस्कुन्डन
God has made me, made my time to be very, very tight
देवड़ ना समयानी, चाला, चाला, तीर्कले कुन्डा जेस्ड
Yesterday I came here at ten thirty
नैन नैनो, रात्रि पदिनारको चानिकिक
Up to twelve thirty, I was preparing the message
पन्ने गण्टल वरको नैन संदेशम, वर्तमानम प्रिपेयर अउतन
In the morning, five thirty, I got up
ओदे कालम आइद्रोरक लेस्यान
I am here
एक्रे इदिन नान एक्रुन्न
I am there tomorrow
रेप कोड उन्ड
Tomorrow night, I am going back home, I will reach home at one o'clock
रेप एल्लुंड ओदे कालम नैनो, वोंटिगंड केल्तन उरु
And morning, I have to leave for Nellur at six o'clock
ओदे कालम, अर्ला आर्गण्टल नेलुर एल्लालि
So, I will come in the night probably
मल्ला बाउश, सायंत्रानिकोस्तन रात्रि
In the sixth night, I am going to Delhi
मल्ली आरो रोज, आरो तारीको सायंत्रण, दिल्ली वेल्थ
And ministry, I will come back on ninth night
तुम्यो तारीको नाइट पर्चेरे कोसम तीर्क
Ten downwards, I should go back to my work
पदोता अरिक्कु मदलकोन, मर्ला ना पन्लकिन
Goes on and on and on and on
इलाय वेल्थ वेल्थ वेल्थ
I am so happy, I don't have time for anything else, other than God's work, my housework and my office work
चाला संतोषिंग उन्न, नाक वेरे पन्ले मले, ना पनी, देवड़ पनी, ना कुटुम्म पनी, तप्पै इन्क वेरे पन्ले
I am thankful to God
नैन दानिबट्टी देवनिको वान्दनाल चेलिस्त
So, what I am trying to say, keep yourself busy
नैन चप्पलनु कुन्न विष्णुम अंडे, तीर्कले कुन्डा जेस्कुन निमल्ली मेरु
So, we are going to see six things where we are going to spend time, this free time
ई काली समयानी, मनवे एक्रेक गडपालाने दानी गुरिंचे आरु विष्णु, मन चोड्डोतन
First, time for self
नी कोरको, नी उकैटाइंचुने समय
You should give time for yourself
नी कोरको नी उस समयानी, येवाले कोन्ता
That means
दान अर्धमेंट अंडे
You have to relax sometime
कोन्त सेप, रिलैक्स आवाली
It may be some, some good games you are playing, not this cellphone game
मोबाइल तो, सेलफोन तो आड़े आटल गाकुन्डा, कोन्या आटल आवाली
Some physical activity you should have
बौतिक सम्मानम्म गा, आड़े ट्वेंटी, देहम तो, आड़े ट्वेंटी आटल
Ah, even today, not today, I didn't go for work, Lord's Day, so morning seven to seven thirty, I make sure that I go for little walking and jogging
ओदे कालम, एन निंची एढ़ नारकण्टल मध्दल, नैन प्रतिरोज, जागिंग वेल्थ उन्ड
This physical body is important for me
ई बौतिक देहम गोड, नाक चाला प्रामक्यमय
Have to keep it fit, no
दिन चाला गट्टिगा, फिटगा उन्छुकालि
So, you take care of your physical body, yourself
कवट नी देहानी गुरिंचि, नी स्रद्ध वाइस्तुन, नी कोरक नी कोन्त समय
Be, be careful about your diet, what you are taking
नी तिन्तुन आहारम गुरिंचि कोड नी जार्त वाइचु
Don't take all junk food
Junk food अंत दिसको दु
Burger, you will become like burger
Burger लिन्टे, नी बर्गरला आयपोत
All those avoid, no
वाटनिट ने, वधु तिसको दु
इटलो एदने चेस्कुन, तिनाल Happy, okay
इन्कल जेस्कुन दिनाल
Be careful about what you eat
नी तिनेदान विष्णु जार्त गाउन्ड
Take care of your health, eat on time
नी आरोग्य गुरिंचि जार्त दिसको, समयानी की तिन
Have some physical activity also
कोन्त देहम तो जेसे ट्वेंटी पन्लचे
Have some time for relax
कोन्त समय विष्रांत दिसको, विष्रांत दिसको अनिको दिस समय
This is very important
इदि चाला प्रामक्यमय इंदि
You know why?
एंदुक देस
I tell many people, I am very busy, I don't have time to sleep also, अंडर
चाला मज योत्तो उन्डर, नैन चाला तीर्कले कुन्डन, नित्रबोधन कोड समय लेद
You are neglecting your body
नी देहानी नु निर्लक्षण जेस्त नव
Your body is the temple of the Holy Ghost
गुर्तिंचन्दि, नी देहमो, देवनी आत्मक आलयमय इंदि
You have to take care of this body
ई, ई देहम गुरिंचि, स्रद्ध दिसको
Like this place is taken care now, nightly whitewashed, everything is taken care, no cracks are there, take care of your body also, no
ई मंद्रम गुरिंचि, कटडम गुरिंचि, अला जार्त दिसकुन्डर, मंचिका पेंटेसी, एटु अंडे, क्रैक्स लेकुन्डा, अला जार्त दिसकुन्डर, मन देहम गुरिंचि कोड, अला जार्त दिसको
So, give some time to yourself
कवट नी कोरको, नी कोन्त समयानी कैटाइंचको
And secondly
रेंडा अच्छ
Time with God
देवनी तो समयम कैटाइंचल
It is very, very important
इदि चाला, चाला प्रामक्यम
Devotion in the morning and at night
ओदे कालमो, अलग रात्रि कालमो, दाईविक सम्मानमय देवनी सहवास मुन्ड
Maybe fix a time so that totaling, it may be around one hour
मतंगाल्पी, दर्गापगा, ओका गण्टा, ओका समयान कैटाइंच
One hour for God, personally with God
वेत्तिगतंग, देवन तो गड़डानको ओका गण्टा कैटाइंच
Morning, as soon as you get up
ओदे कालम, लेचिन वेनु वेन्ट
Worship the Lord
प्रभु नाराधिंच
Read the Bible systematically
पद्धति प्रकारम देवन वाक्यानी ध्यानम्चे
And pray to God
मल्ला देवनिको प्राध
Night before going to sleep
नित्रबोधन उन्न रात्रि
Read the word of God
देवन वाक्यानी चद
And praise the Lord and commit to yourself and then go to sleep
Verse three, I think.
What is it?
Ah, so this Abraham is a very rich man.
This Abraham is very rich.
And in his car is not there, cars are there.
Cars are not in his car.
Yes, that is the car, no?
Cars are there, they have cars.
So drivers were there, servants were there.
Cars are there, many people are there.
Many servants were there.
Many people are there.
Sarah is there to work also.
Sarah is also working.
But this man was doing lot of work at home.
This person is very busy.
You know what he was doing?
He was working early in the morning. He worked for a month.
Claved the wood.
He cut the wood.
Anybody has done?
He worked for a month.
No, nobody knows.
He worked for a month.
So it's not easy.
He worked a lot.
So Abraham was doing that.
Abraham was working.
And that too, in that morning, his mood should have been very much off, no? He has to go and offer his son as a sacrifice, but joyfully he is working.
He was working hard, he was very excited, he was very proud of him, he was very happy, he worked hard.
So he was working in his house.
He worked hard.
Even though servants were there.
Many people are there.
So brothers and sisters, young brothers and sisters, do some work at home.
Young people are working hard in their house.
Evening, when I went, mommy, daddy, what should I do?
When I went to my house, I was very excited.
Mommy, daddy will be shocked, what happened, marmonds will be there.
He was very excited.
Do some work at home.
Do anything in your house.
It will be good for you, I am telling from my experience.
You are very happy.
So do some work at home.
Do something in your house.
So time with family.
Time with family.
Speak, spend some time, and then you can work at home.
Do something in your house.
So three things I have told so far.
What is it?
Time with self.
What is it?
Time with God.
With God.
Time with family.
Time with family.
Fourthly.
Four.
Time with the family of God.
Time with God.
That is very important also.
This is also a problem.
I am not going to give many references.
There are many references, but I don't want to say, you know that also. There are many, I will tell you.
When our time is given, opportunity is given, come to the house of God.
Time is given, opportunity is given.
It may be Bible study, prayer meeting, gospel work, fasting prayer, young people also should come.
Young people should come, Bible study, fasting prayer, anything, they should come.
Decide, you will attend.
I will attend, I will pray.
Don't send your mother and father, go and pray for me in the assembly, you will be at home, no, don't do that.
When I am in your house, I will pray.
So you also come.
You should come.
Attend all the meetings, whatever is possible, in the house of God.
For the sake of God, for the sake of God.
Love this family also, no?
Love this family.
And be with this family, enjoy the fellowship.
Love this family.
God will make you joyful here in this place.
Love this place.
And also, you can have some contacts of fellowship with those who fear God, you can have time in prayer also with them, no?
If you are scared of God, you should pray.
They may be your friends also, no?
They may be your relatives. You are friends.
I have heard some people, all cousins joining together over phone and praying.
I have heard some friends.
So it is good that you join as a family of God and praying.
If you are scared of God, you should pray.
So make sure you give time for spending with the family of God.
If you are scared of God, you should pray.
Fifthly, time with friends.
Friends.
You should spend time with your friends.
Friends.
You should have friends.
Friends.
Immediately somebody has decided, uncle told like this, what mommy, daddy, what are you saying? You should have friends.
Uncle said, I am scared, friends said, I am scared.
You should have friends.
Friends.
But those friends should not influence you in the wrong ways, don't have such friends, no?
If you have friends, you should pray.
Those who will influence you with their life or with their ideas, with their thoughts.
If you are scared of God, you should pray.
You should not be trying to please your friends, no?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Don't have any secret friends without your knowledge of your father and mother, no?
If you are scared, you should pray.
When I was in school or college.
I was in school or college.
I had two friends.
Who were Hindus.
But they will come to my house.
They will come to my house.
They will spend some time, my father, mother will meet them also.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And my father knows their father also.
My grandfather knows your grandfather.
It is known, we go together somewhere, all that is allowed, but we used to spend some time, no?
If you are scared, you should pray.
So nothing wrong in that.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Have some friends also.
Friends.
You can't be a money, I will not talk to anybody.
If you are a money, you should pray.
I will go to school, college, I will come back.
If you go to school, college, you should pray.
You should have friends, no?
Friends.
Good friends you have.
Friends.
They should not take you in the wrong way.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Be careful with your friends.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Don't get influenced.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So you can have friends also.
Friends.
But be careful.
If you are scared.
My friends, when I used to go for sports and all, everybody will go for movie, that my friend will say, I will be with you, you don't go, I will also not go, we will be together like that, it's good, no?
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
Time with friends.
Friends.
Finally.
Finally.
Finally, we will come to one place, no?
We will come to a place.
Time with.
What is it?
Time with God.
God.
Everything is over, God, family, family of God, friends. Time with cellphone. Time, it needs time, you.
Cellphone. How much time do you need?
Thirty thousand rupees, seventy thousand rupees, I bought this, no? I should spend.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Time with phone.
Phone.
Time with the smartphone.
Smartphone.
Should you spend time or not?
If you are scared, you should pray.
All are very spiritual heavenly, oh no, until we should not use.
If you are scared, you should pray.
It has become a part of our body.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Without this, we cannot survive.
If you are scared, you should pray.
One day I left my cellphone in the car and got into the flight.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Oh, I told everybody somehow, I called here, there, finally I got the phone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
How can I be without phone for three days in Gujarat?
If you are scared, you should pray.
I can't, I can't live, I can't be without, I can be without food, but not without this cellphone.
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
So we have to give time for smartphone also.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So you should be smart in using the smartphone.
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
Don't allow this phone to become smarter and control you, no?
If you are scared, you should pray.
You should say, I am smarter than you cellphone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
I will control you.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You can't control me.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Whenever I want, I will use, otherwise I will keep it aside, you know?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Today, I don't know how you are going to do it, but learn how to keep this cellphone away.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You should decide.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Keep it off from me.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Today, everything, you want to use this only, everything, everything, all, all.
If you are scared, you should pray.
How I can keep it away?
If you are scared, you should pray.
So learn how to keep it away.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Let it not control you, but you control that cellphone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
One or two ways.
One or two ways.
Today, for your information, I never got any call from anybody, do you know that, do you believe it?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Today.
Today.
No call, no official call, no personal call.
Today, no call, no office, no personal.
You know why?
Why?
Everybody knows where I will be today.
If you are scared, you should pray.
They can't disturb me.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And they won't disturb me, because I don't disturb them also, no?
If you are scared, you should pray.
How are you, what did you have today, this morning, what did you eat, what is that?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Then your friend will call at eleven o'clock and call, have you gone to sleep?
If you are scared, you should pray.
So you don't disturb others, they will not disturb you, definitely.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So if you want to cut somebody, avoid somebody's call, you should not call, decide what purpose, whom you have to call, that's all.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So in the cellphone.
In the cellphone.
There are many gadgets available, many things are available.
There are many gadgets.
Many useful things are there.
There are many.
Ah, I don't know many of them.
There are many.
I am very, very poor in knowing about the cellphone, even though it is a iPhone, I don't know many things.
If you are scared, you should pray.
But I have decided certain things very clearly.
If you are scared, you should pray.
I will not be in Instagram, I will not be in Facebook, I am not.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So I advise you very sincerely, don't be in that.
If you are scared, you should pray.
If you are really concerned about your spiritual life.
If you are scared, you should pray.
If you don't want to ruin your life.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You should take this decision.
If you are scared, you should pray.
There is no thought, second thought, no second thought.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You can survive without that, I am surviving without that, you can.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Many people want to show themselves to the outside world, and they want to see the outside world also.
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
This, with this phone, you can go anywhere, entire world, you can see many things, anything, wherever you are, you can do whatever you want.
If you are scared, you should pray.
One step you take, one step you take.
If you are scared, you should pray.
There is something pulling you from their other side.
If you are scared, you should pray.
That is why you have to be very, very careful about this.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So you should not put yourself in the cards of this.
If you are scared, you should pray.
The Lord Jesus Christ was tempted when he was in the world.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You know what was the temptation?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Matthew's Gospel, chapter four.
Matthew's Gospel.
We, in verse eight.
If you are scared, you should pray.
He showed them all the kingdoms of this world and the glory in them, he showed everything.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Everything he showed.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And he said, all these things, I will give it to you, if you fall down and worship.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You accept me, I will give everything in this world, whatever you see.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You were telling Jesus.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You and me are only there, nobody is there.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Never there, it is very secret, you take a decision, move.
Move.
Secret.
If you are scared, you should pray.
He rebuked Satan.
If you are scared, you should pray.
He cut him off.
If you are scared, you should pray.
This is what you need to do.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Be careful.
If you are scared, you should pray.
The entire world will be seen in this.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You can go to the places where nobody can go.
If you are scared, you should pray.
All in secret.
If you are scared, you should pray.
But it will all ruin you finally.
If you are scared, you should pray.
One question I want to ask you.
If you are scared, you should pray.
This cellphone, I understand, causes mental disorders also.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You become addicted to technology, technological addiction.
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
So it is dangerous.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And you know, even the worldly people, is there anybody who has said smartphone is good, use it extensively, is there anybody who has told?
If you are scared, you should pray. It is a problem, you should pray.
Any, I am not saying pastors, uncles, aunties, any worldly person.
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
You use more of this smartphone, you will become smarter, it is good for you, anybody has told, one person, one person.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Nobody, nobody.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Then why you want to use it?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Why you should ruin yourself?
If you are scared, you should pray.
So some years ago.
If you are scared, you should pray.
In one assembly.
If you are scared, you should pray. In one assembly.
So some parents told, our children are addicted to cellphone, please talk to them.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So I should talk to them.
If you are scared, you should pray.
What to tell them?
If you are scared, you should pray.
If I say, don't use your cellphone, uncle, you are also having a cellphone, smartphone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So they are very smart, no?
If you are scared, you should pray.
So I was generally talking about smartphone, all that.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Finally, we decided.
If you are scared, you should pray.
This smartphone is there.
Smartphone.
And that screensaver.
Screensaver.
You put, what would Jesus do?
If you are scared, you should pray.
If the cellphone is in Jesus' hands, what would he do?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Put that in the screensaver.
Put the screensaver.
Whenever you, what would Jesus do?
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
What would Jesus do?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Whatever Jesus would do with the smartphone, you do that.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Calculator, torchlight.
Calculator, torchlight. If you are scared, you should pray.
You can use that, no, what would Jesus do? And whatever you are doing, I told like that to the children there.
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
What would Jesus do, you put in your cellphone, smartphone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Oh, you are scared.
You are scared.
Put it, what would Jesus do, do whatever he would do.
If you are scared, you should pray.
I, and one verse, we will read, Colossians, chapter three.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Three and verse seventeen.
If you are scared, you should pray.
We will read altogether.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Whatever you do.
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
Whatever you do in word or deed, whatever it may be, you speak or you see or hear, whatever you do, do it in the name of the Lord Jesus.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And finally, this cellphone should not ruin your life.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Be careful about that.
If you are scared, you should pray.
It is a final warning when you are using the cellphone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And be careful, even listening to the messages through cellphone, be careful.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Everybody here, there, and what is the use of listening, no? I know own family.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Everything you will see, you will be seeing only, no, wasting time, no, don't waste time like that.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So they decided, only on Sunday, one hour, they will listen to message.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Bible study of one person, they will listen, that's all.
If you are scared, you should pray.
When you are free, listen to some songs through this phone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
When you are working in your home.
If you are scared, you should pray.
You can listen to some songs, it goes into your heart.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Then you will be singing in your heart.
If you are scared, you should pray.
When you are alone, traveling somewhere, when you are lying down, the song will come in your mind.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Verse six says, sixteen says in Colossians, chapter three.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Singing with grace in your hearts.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So that you should be singing in your heart.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So this is how you can use this smartphone.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So we have seen six thoughts.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Time with self.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Time with God.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Time with family.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Time with God's family.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Time with friends.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And time with your phone also.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Plan, prioritize.
If you are scared, you should pray.
After going home, I understand there is an app which can say where, what all time you spend in what, I don't know about that app, if you have that app, you can install that app also, understand?
If you are scared, you should pray. If you are scared, you should pray.
Just look at that.
Just look at that.
And think whether it is profitable unto you spiritually.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Is it ruining my spiritual life?
If you are scared, you should pray.
I am getting connected with this phone, but getting disconnected with God, no?
If you are scared, you should pray.
I am disconnecting, I am going away from God.
If you are scared, you should pray.
If that is so, avoid them.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So what you should do?
If you are scared, you should pray.
Redeeming time.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Somehow invest in that time, especially the free time.
If you are scared, you should pray.
So may the Lord help you in this desire to redeem time.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Shall we pray?
We will pray.
Loving Father, bless this word which has been given.
May the Father bless you.
Lord, help us to redeem time.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Help us to spend the time given by you profitably, by glory.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Bless everyone who has heard this message.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Bless the decision what they have taken.
If you are scared, you should pray.
And Lord, help them to, Lord, make some decisions very clear in their life.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Help them to be victorious.
If you are scared, you should pray.
We pray with thanksgiving in Jesus' name.
If you are scared, you should pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Part sankhya padhar parakuntam, song number sixteen, partla prathuloni, part sankhya padhar parakuntam. If you are scared, you should pray. 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 Part of the song, this part, this part, the song, Bible, ten songs, part of the song. ten song, padavapattu. as i mentioned to you that we are looking at some practical thoughts in application to our spiritual life from the word of god. nenu meetha chepnatluga manamo devuni vaakemuloni chie, ma jeevitanik anumayinshukune vedamaga, konta sandesham untnan chetkan. so take it very seriously not to take it lightly. dene chala tevaranga pariklinchati, edo ala ankothi telikka thiskothu. and give a thought to whatever we have heard. so final thought was what? Time with, time with cellphone. akadalam bhandi, cellphoneto samay. so we have to spend time, no? We have to, otherwise how to live in this world? samayani keta inchali kadha, cellphoneto lehanty ala jeevichalak. start again from that what I left, I told you, you should learn how not to use it, no? nenu meetha chepeno, yala dani vaadakunda undali. so I told you, you give some thoughts and decide how you can avoid using cellphone. ipur miru koletalampal jepandi, yala eefelponi vaadakunda pakarabettu. so I want to bring some thoughts to you. decide on sunday that you will not use the cellphone, possible? adi varamo cellphoneu vaadnu, sadamele. at least net connectivity and all that shut off, emergency calls, you are all very important people, some emergency calls will come. me andra chala pravakuyal, ekthira chala pravakuyal call sastunna. I am not very important so no call is coming. I want to tell you, how worldly people, how we are avoiding cellphones in our workplace. nenu meek chappanalkutunna, yala gama namo, mana panjese sthalalu cellphoneni vaadakunda unda. I was in some hotel staying. nenu oka hotello untarunna. in one place. oksthalalu. so that server who was serving in that hotel, he was telling, cellphones are not allowed in the hotel during my work time, he said. adan jeepeda akad panjese oka serveru, nenu panjese eesamayula cellphoneu laalakana thichva manjeepeda. if you go to secondor path club and go to the dining hall there in the restaurant, no cellphone is allowed to be used in that dining hall. dining hall, secondor path lo. it's a very, very prestigious club. adi chala chala pairga chinnatante club, andalo dining halllo kela tapudo, for cellphoneu anumathu ledu. not allowed. tel sammeke, ledu. I was attending one church wedding in Pune. Pune lo oka chachimit wedding attendeyano. some important call came from my factory. company ninchi, factory ninchi oka pravakuyal phone call ochindi. so I went, I just took their phone. phone isko ne velan. somebody came and told, go out and talk, not here. yavu okalochi, andoramilli makladikrada manjeepeda. many of us use the cellphone in the assembly also, I have seen many people. chala mandi maralu, sangamalu, mandiramalu koda cellphoneu vaartaru, nenu jusam chala mandi. we have started some, three factories in various locations, the latest factory we started was in Gujarat. verver sthalalu, moode factory lo meharam ichchamu, latest gaaram ichchindeyanty ante Gujaratlu. so in that factory. a factory lo. the rule what we have put. akram bettiniyam entanty. cellphones are not allowed in the factory. factory lo palaki, cellphone anumathu ledu. workers cannot bring their cellphone inside the factory. factory lo palaki, panjese etu ante panoalu, cellphone thiskaradan vele. we have a cellphone stand in the entrance of the factory, everybody have to keep their cellphone, lock it, take the key inside the factory. a factory ke, mundu bagalu ante keta dagra, eem jechanato oka cellphoneu bettadaniki, okad pitam, andalo valu, petala a cellphoneu lock thiskoni raavan. okkakrika okkaka. racku. racku. rack ichcha. so if we have a rule here, like the chapel stand, we will have a cellphone stand outside. chapel stand laga baita cellphone stand outbetkunte manu. nobody will come here, are you? yavu raari. churchiko odhandi. odhandi churchikantara. see that shows how serious we worldly, in the worldly way we are in our work. adi deni chuvisnandey, mana panjala mana enta lokastula unna, mana enta tevaranga unnanda, ali gurinchani, mani chusistundi. it should not be a disturbance. adi mani ke, ebandalikichu. eight hours you ought to be without the cellphone. eni meedi gantalu, phone lekunda unda. because in some of our factories, maybe watching movie, sitting and working also, both, no? kodimandi movies justu factory lo panjastavu. maybe lying there, Lucy, what? phone justu panjastavu. so we are controlling. me varniyendriskunna. so you can control yourself, putting in some discipline in the way you are using the cellphone. nevo a cellphoneu vaadavidadamlo, nenu neyendrichkavali, edo vidam. and it will be a blessing for you also. adi nik aashiravadam koda. so let us leave this cellphone for the moment, you will get tired, what is this until only talking about smartphone today? kodsebe cellphone kuri pakkunabedham, miru, alisipada reedankalu phone kuri chijaplar padakal. we will go to the word of god. ipur devu lekanbaalukaltha. very briefly we will finish. chala klippanga manam mogista. I am conscious about the clock which is right in front of me, very big, very clear, I know the numbers also. chala kata gadiyaram naamun untsavandhi, numberlo koda kanpattakunna. so this gadiyaram will continue to speak to me. adi naata maatladu untan de gadiyaram. time up, time up, please stop. gaapese samayani aipainan jeptunna. so we will just read three verses from the word of god. devu lekanbaalukal, moode vachalalu manu chautam. these words, these three verses show who you are. e moode vachalalu, ne vevu rani dani teli jastni, dai ches raspon. if you are a child of god. nevo devu lekavaithe. if you have accepted god. esu pravaran angikariste. and if you are a follower of god. devu ne vembadinchavikthu vaithe. if you are serious about your spiritual life. ne atme jeevitanu chini, ne vevu tevaramayana aashikthi kaligana. if you want to grow spiritually. adiyatmikanga vadhilalakunna. you should know who you are. ne vevu yavu rama dhanik teliyali. if you know who you are. ne vevu rama nik teliyaste. your behavior everything will change according to that. ne pravartana prathiti koda, dani prakaram markchentu. so we will read Ephesians chapter two and verse ten altogether. manam chautam, Ephesial Krasnupatrika, rendavatdayam padavachnum. Ephesians chapter two and verse ten. Ephesial Krasnupatrika, rendavatdayam padavachnum. we will read altogether loudly please. andram kalisi bigarga chautam dai chesi. loudly, verse ten. padavachnum. for we are, we are his workmanship, created in Christ Jesus. devu munduga sidhavachina. which called before arant that we should be walking them. sustinchabaddnavaramai, ayla chesina paniayunnamu. we are his workmanship. manamo ayla chesina, ayla cheti paniayunnamu. Acts chapter one and verse eight. apostolakaram lo otavatdayam, eni vichachnum. Acts chapter one and verse eight. apostolakaramlu, oktavatdayam, eni vichachnum. we will read altogether. andram kalisi chautam. but he shall receive power after that the Holy Ghost will come upon you and he shall be witnesses. and be more dangerous. nandakal, buhdi gantamlo varaku, nakusakshila yundirani varitachetkan. he shall be witnesses, you are witnesses. nakusakshila yunduru, miru sakshila yunnar. you are his workmanship. ayla cheti paniayunnar. you are his witness. ayyaku sakshila yunnar. thirdly, Second Corinthians. moode aviga, rendavukorintil krasnupatrika. chapter five, and verse twenty. yaravayavachnum. Second Corinthians, chapter five and verse twenty. Korintil Krasnupatrika, idavatdayam, yaravayavachnum. we will read altogether. andram kalisi chautam. loudly. bigarga. now, then, we are ambassadors for Christ, as though God did this. we pray. devu ni to samadhanapavdani, krishthi pakshemuka, me man prachmalakunchunna. we are ambassadors for Christ. krishthi kura yavaralamayunnamu. so I placed these three thoughts before you. me mundu e moode talampal nenuchunna. who you are. ne vevu rani. you are his workmanship. nevo ayla chesina, ayla cheti paniayunnamu. the lord has recreated you as his workmanship. devu du nenu tirigi, ayla cheti pani ga sustinchadu. and then he has made you a new creature. ayla nenu nodana sustika chesha. and he kept you in this world as a display for him. ayla e lokam antadiki, nenu chuviston vachadalmata. and in Acts chapter one and verse eight. apostolakaram lo otavatdayam, eni vichachnum. you are his witnesses. miru ayyaku sakshila yunnar. you have to show forth or speak about Christ. miru munduke kanpadaali, krishthi gurinchimatladali. the lord jesus christ should be witnessed through you and you should present jesus christ to this world. nevo e lokani ki, pravani esu krishthu varani parichen jesa vidamlo, ne dwara, pravani esu krishthu var baitikravali, matladali. Second Corinthians, chapter five and verse twenty. rendavukorintil krasnupatrika, idavatdayam, yaravayavachnum. representatives of Christ in this world. e lokamlo krishthi kuman prathnidulamayunna. ambassadors. raya baralam. Indian will be an ambassador in US. Bharate lo, America lo, raya baralun tar. Americans will be ambassadors in this country, it is a foreign country for them. variki e videshingavati, America vali ikkara yavarul. so ambassadors means, we are representatives of that country in that foreign country. raya barulante, a videshimlo, maadeshim tarupna, manam prathnidulakunna. we are all heavenly citizens. manam andram paralokavarsa. we are born from above. paralokamichputnava. and we are kept as ambassadors in this foreign land, in this wicked world. yoka chedda lokamlo, yoka videshamlo, e manam paradeshammu, ikkada manamo, ayyakara yavarul. so keep these three thoughts in your mind. e moode talampal me manaslo unchko. and we are going to see four things, how we should be. naluku visyal manam chodabothamu, manam elaa undali anedani. we are, we are his workmanship. manam ayla cheti paniayunnam. how we should live. manam elaa jeevichan. we are his witnesses. manam ayla sakshila yunnam. how we should live. manam elaa jeevichan. we are his ambassadors. manam ayyakara yavarul. and how we should live in this world. inkamanu e lokam elaa jeevichan. so god has got a purpose in keeping you in this world for himself and he is revealing how you should be from these three verses. e moode vachalalu dhara, devu du, e lokamlo nenu, ayla cheti pani ga unchini, ne vela undalani teli jastunna. so first we are going to see. motavadi gama namu chodabothnam. four things as I said. naluku visyal nenjeepnatu. first, how our appearance should be. mana yoka aharayam elaa undali, bautika maina aharayam elaa undali. it's a personality, how you should be. okavetika manam elaa kanpadaali. it is very, very important. adi chala chala pravakuyamayindi. you cannot say that, I will dress as I like. me chappal yuvana istumachidatne lo dress cheskuntanu. this appearance is very, very important. ne vekanpadae vidamu chala chala pravakuyam. you know why? eduka delsa. the word of god says. devagranan yutundhi. in First Corinthians, chapter six and verse twenty. Madrukorintil Krasnupatrika, aravatdayam, yaravayavachnum. First Corinthians, chapter six and verse twenty. aravatdayam, yaravayavachnum. you are bought with a price. ikkada, me vevu petti konapantara. and verse ninety. pandamavachnum. your body is a temple of the holy ghost. me devam parshuddhaatmo kaalayamayundi. and verse twenty says. yaravayavachnum yutundhi. glorify god in your body. ne devam to devu ni mahimpaarchindi, anjeepra yavadindi. in your body, this physical body, god should be glorified. yoka bautika maina e devam lo, devu du mahimpaarchpadali. by your worship god is glorified. ne aaradan dhara devu mahimpaarchpadali. by your witness god is glorified. ne saksham dhara devu mahimpaarchpadali. all that you accept. adi anta koda angikarichamadhi. you say it is very good. adi chala manchti, ne japachu. but through your body also you are glorifying god. kani ne devam dhara koda ne devu ni mahimpaarch. so you should be very careful how you appear in this world. kaavati e visyalu, ne chala jahartga undali, ne vela kanpada tu no e lokam. you are his workmanship. ne vayla cheti paniayunnam. you are his witness. ayyaku sakshivi nevo. you are his ambassador. ayyaku raya barivi. you, you, so you have to be very careful about your appearance. kaavati yela raya barulga unna, ne vevu, ne voka aharayam visyalu, baitik kanpadae visyalu, chala jahartga. First Timothy, chapter two. Madrum Timothy Patrika, rendavatdayam. verse nine and verse ten. Tommi Rupati vachnum. First Timothy, chapter two. Madrum Timothy Patrika, rendavatdayam. verse nine and ten. Tommi Rupati vachnum. yeah, you can read. mariyastriyilunu. adorn themselves in modest apparel. akada raya varna mata, tagu matrapu, vastramalato. tagu matrapu, it is modest, which is acceptable. angikaramayinatante, tagu matrapu vastramalachetalan karinchkavali. it should be acceptable to god what you are wearing. ne vevu darichkunna redu, adi devu ni drushla angikarich. it is not very expensive, very fashionable. vevu vayindho, ledu de baga trendy fashion do, ala undal. you should dress well. ne manchika dress cheskavali. you should present yourself well. ne manchika kanpadaali, aareepi gavustul darinchali. but it should be modest. kani adi tagu matramgane undal. each, what is the motive of your dressing? nevo ayyaka vastral darichadam patla, ne uddeshmenti. what is your motive? Something will be there in your mind. ne manaslo edo undatika, induka vastral darich. what you should be, even my dress should glorify god. ne uddeshamo aavachnala undanu, na dress koda, na dustu koda, devu ni mahimpaarch. even my dress, it should be acceptable to god. na, na dress koda, devu nik angikaramayundali. but it should, the sad thing is. kani dinana vichara karame nishmenta. what happens among young people. yavasthalo, een garutunna. they are going by the fashions of this world. e lokasambandamayana twenty fashions prakaram veltunna. in Romans, chapter twelve. Romiel Krasnupatrika, panendavatdayam. Romans, chapter twelve. Romiel Krasnupatrika, panendavatdayam. verse two. rendavachnum. verse one says, your body should be presented as a living sacrifice. okkavachnum yutundhi, me devam lo sajiva yagumga, ayyakka samarpichal. it should be acceptable to god. devu nik angikaramayundali. in your body, including your dress, without dress there is no body, so with your dress, you should be acceptable to god. ne vevu dustulado sahaan, e devam devu nik angikaramayundali. verse two says. rendavachnum yutundhi. we not be conformed to this world. akada raya varna mata, e lokam mariyadan ansarinchaka. don't be conformed. e ala, e lokaprakaram nadavkanti. let not this world come upon you. e lokam ne mehikraakunna jusko. let not the world in fashion come on you. lokasambandamayana twenty, e fashion ne mehikrapunna. you should be different. ne vevu pratheganga undali. you should be different from your friends. ne snehitil kantani vevu pratheganga undali. what this world is doing. ne lokam enjastundi. it goes in a different way. adi vare vidamlo veltuntanu. and we as children of god believers, we try to follow the world. manamo devu ni pitalaga, viswasthalaga, lokani vembadichavava. the word of god says. devagranan yutundhi. verse two says. rendavachnum. past time you walked according to the course of this world. akada yutundhi, kata kalamlo, miru, e lokam mariyadan ansarinchadchar. so whatever the worldly people are doing, you are also doing. lokastle enjastnaro, alakijstachar. so now, when you are belonging to god. ipur miru devu nik chindravargha. when you are following god. devu ni vembadichunna. you should not follow the course of this world. e lokasambandamayana visyalu, ne vembadichkavali. whatever fashion comes in this world, it should not come to you, you should not be conformed to that. e lokamlo edena patta fashion ostha, adi ne vekarikraakudhi. so whatever you are wearing, it should bring glory to god, it should be acceptable to god. ne velaite darichstnava, adi devu ni mahimpaarchali, adi devu nik angikaramayundali. it should be modest, it should be simple. adi tagu matramga, madhrikaran ga undal. you should be well dressed also. ne vevu manchika dustul darinchal. conscious about the dress you wear. ne veskunna etu ante, dustul visyalu chala jahartaga. the appearance, the way you dress shows who you are. ne vekanpadae vidanu, dustul darichavidamun, ne vevu ratiyast. the fashion which you follow shows whom you belong to. ne vembadichunna etu ante, a fashion ededu unda, ne vevu rik chindinava, vatiyast. speaks so many things about you. adi ne gurinchu chala visyal yutundhi. speaks about your personality. ne vekittvaani gurinchu yutundadi. so we have to be careful. kaavati jahartaga undanu. so when the lord works in your heart. ebride prabhu ni kradhavala panjastundada. all these fashions will go away. evani koda velipotanu. all these decorations will go away. alankaraalani velipotanu. you will not give much importance for that. vaadiki anta pravakayayenu. so this appearance is important because you are his workmanship, you are his witness, you are his ambassador. kaavati e aharayam, baitik kanpadae vidam, ne dustul darichavidam, chala pravakumayindi, indukanty, ne vayla chesina cheti pani vayunnamu, ayyaku sakshiva yunnam, ayyakara yavari vayunnamu. secondly, how our behavior should be. mana vidamlo elaa undali, mana pravartana elaa undanu. we are in this world. mana e lokamlo. we are living with people with different characters. verver vekittval karikunthuntanu unnanu. we are living in our family. mana kotamamlo. we live in, with among many people in the school or college or in the place where we work. manam panjese sthalalu, gani schoollo, gani college lo, gani verver vekuntam, manu unnanu. how is our behavior? mana pravartana elaa undanu. how is your, how do you act and react in various situations? ne vekparisitil lo, ne vela pratispandistunna, vela panjastunna. how do you react to the people? prajalaki ne vela pratispandistunna. how do you react to your father and mother? ne talidandralaki, ereetika pratispandistu. how you react to your brother and sister at home? intiregrani, ne chellanu to lehanty, ne sahodaralu to elaa undanu. how are your words? ne maadli elaa unna. how are your actions? ne pannli elaa unna. you should be different. ne vevu prathegamayana vektayavu. many times we get angry. चाला चाला कोपो उस्तुन्न मनकी
We lose our temper
मनयोका सहनानी कोल्पोत उन्न चाला
Move bad languages
चट्टा भाषा वाड़तो उन्न
Shout at our parents also
तल्ली तंड्रल मेदो गोड़ा अन्तकान अर्थ
We talk very, very bad words which are unbecoming for a believer, a child of God
देवनी पिटल लेदर्डे विश्वासी वाड़ गोड़न टोट्ट भाषा वाड़त आट्वेंट पदाल वाड़तो चाला
The word of God says
देवग्राम नु जप्तुन्दि
Very clearly
चाला स्पस्त
We have to respect and honor elderly people
पद्दवारी एन निवेन्तो गौरविंचाली, वारीनिकानपड़ाचाली
And also the word of God says in Ephesians chapter six and verse one, we have to honor our parents also, respect our parents
इनका एफेसिल क्रासन पत्रिका आरवत्यम ओक्टावच्चन जप्तुन्दि, नितल्ली तंड्रल सन्मानिंचाली
How do you address them?
वारी निव एलासंभोधिस्ताव
How do you talk to them?
वारी त एलामाटलाड़ताव
Even today
इदिनाल कोड़ा
When I am with my mother
नेनु ना तल्ली तो उन्न
I will not put my leg one over the other
वकस काल मेदा काल एस्कुन्गोछन
Even today
ईरोज कोड़ा
My mother is ninety years old
ना तल्ली तम्बे सावच्चराल
She has never told me to sit like that
ना तल्ली एपुर चप्पले एलागोछ
But even today, when I sit, I sit with respect
नेनु इदिनाल कोड़ा कुचुन्न टोट्ट चाला गौरवन्तो कुचुन्न तान
That should be our behavior with our parents
अलाउंडाली मनम एका प्रवर्तनमन, तल्ली तंड्रल विषयलो
The word of God says
देवग्राम नु जप्तुन्दि
Many children mock their parents
चाला मल्ली एकतरे जस्तो उन्तर वाली तल्ली
1 Proverbs chapter thirty
सामितल वलमु मुपयावत्यायु
Proverbs chapter thirty and verse seventeen
सामितल वलमु मुपयावत्यायु पतिहेड़ वच्ची
"The eye that mockedeth its father, despite it, to obey his mother, the ravens of the bear valley shall pick out out, and the eagles shall eat it." There is a punishment which is mentioned
इकड़ा चप्पुवेन्न माटा
Verse seventeen
पतिहेड़ वच्ची "तंड्रीनी अपहसिंछे, तल्ली माटा विनन्नोल्लनी वानिकान्नो, लोयकाकुलु पीकुनु, पक्षीराजु पिल्ललु धानिपिनु"
Verse eleven
पद्दवन वच्ची
"There is a generation that cursed their father and did not bless their mother"
तव तंड्रीनी शेपिंच्छु, तल्लीनी दीविंसनी तरमुगलदु
So many times we do that
चाला चाला मनम जस्तो उन्ड
Because our parents are not educated
इन्तुकान्डे मन तल्ली तंड्रल अन्त अक्षरासुलगा वालीक तेले
So we misbehave with them
वालु त चाला चट्टिका प्रवर्त
We shout at them
वाल अर्थस्तम वाकी केले
Don't care for them
ए माटन लेकवेट
It is wrong
अदि चाला तपु
Why?
इन्तुकान्डे
Your God's workmanship
निव देवनी चेतिपनि आयुन्न
You are his witness
आयन साक्षिविनिवु
You are his ambassador, representative in your home
आयन रायबारिवि इन्तिलो आयनक प्रतिनिधुनिवु
Your behavior should be different with, and you should honor and respect them
निव प्रवर्तन चाला विभिन्न उन्डाली, वारीनिक गौरविंचाली, कानपड़ाचाली
How our words should be?
मनम माटल एलाउंड
Colossian chapter four and verse six
कलसील क्रासन पत्रिका नालु वत्यायु मारो वच्ची
Colossian chapter four and verse six
नालु वत्यायु मारो वच्ची
Let your speech be always with grace, seasoned with salt, that you may know how you ought to answer every man
प्रतिमनुष्यनीके एलाकु प्रत्यत्रम एवरेनो, अदि मेरु तेल्स्कोड़ मे संभाषना उपुवेस्नट्लु, एल्लापुरुचिकालदिगानु, कृपासाकितमगानु
Graceful words, very polite words, that means it should be very tasty, very pleasant
एन्त रुचिकारमयुन्न माटलु, उपुवेस्नट्लुगा एन्त तियेगा उन्दे माटल
So be conscious about the words what you are using
निव वाड़तुन्न पदजालम एटुन्ट दान गुरिंचि जार्त्त
Be careful about your behavior
निव प्रवर्तन गुरिंचा जार्त्त
How you react in situations?
परिस्थितिलकी निव एलाप्रतिस्पन्दिस्तो
How your words are
निमाटल एलाउन्न इतरल दो माटलाइट अपु निमाटल एलाउन्न
I used to tell many people
नेनु चाला मनदिर चप्तुन्न
When somebody does not treat their subordinates or workers well
तमकिन्दा पन्येसे वारीले लेदर्डे, पनिवाल्ले सरिका छोड़न
He will shout at them
वारी मेद अर्थस्तुन्न
But when they come to me
वाल एकर्कर कुचुन्न
They will be very polite with me
यन्तम मरियादगा उन्न
But they go out of the room
कानि एप्लेटे नादिकरिंस्तो
Worker comes, they will be fuming, screaming at them
ईग पनिवाल्ल उस्न टोट्ट एन्त बिग्गरगा आरुस्तो, कैकल वेस्तुन्न
You should tell them
नेनु वारी जप्तुन्द
How are you talking to me?
नु नात एलामाटलाड़त
Same way you ought to talk to them also
वारी त गोड़न वालाले माटलाड़
And I used to tell them
इनका जप्तुन्न वाल्त
You should behave humanly
मानव रीतिगानु उन्डाली, लेदर्डे मानव अत्मुन्तो प्रवर्त
We are believers
मनम विश्वास
But before that
दानीकी मुंद
We are human beings
मनम मनुष्य
Behave humanly
मानवुड़िका प्रवर्त
Behave like a human being, not like an animal
मनुष्यिका प्रवर्त इच्छे जेन्तुलाकार
Behave humanly
मनुष्यिका प्रवर्त
That should be your behavior
अदि अलाउंडाली मन
One verse which is very important in your life
ओका वच्चन निजीतल एन्त प्रामुख्य
Regarding your behavior
निव प्रवर्तन गुरिंचि
Matthew's Gospel
मतेस्वर्त
Chapter seven
एडवत्यम।
Verse twelve.
एडवत्यम पन्यंडवच्छन मतेस्वर्ता।
Matthew's Gospel, chapter seven and verse twelve.
एडवत्यम पन्यंडवच्छन।
Now we are going to read this verse altogether.
ईवच्छन अंदरम कस्तो तम्मन।
Matthew's Gospel, chapter seven and verse twelve.
एडवत्यम पन्यंडवच्छन मतेस्वर्ता।
Therefore.
कावन हमनुष्य नु, मीके एनी चेवलन मेरो कोरुद्रो, अलागुन ने मीरु वारी के चेड़ि।
Ah, that's enough. So, what you expect from others, do the same thing to them.
इतरल निंची नी एरेट कोरताओ, आदेनु चेयल मोदत वालक।
If somebody, you want them to be very polite with you.
यवरैन नीतो वाले मर्यादा माटलाड़ाले नु कोर्तुंते?
You have to be polite with them.
नी गोड़ वारी तो मर्यादा माटलाड़त।
If somebody, you expect them to say thanks to you.
यवरैन नीको थैंक्स चप्पलान नु वांकुंते?
You also should say thanks to them.
नी गोड़ यप्पाले थैंक्स न वालक।
You want others to respect you.
इतरल निन्ना गौरविंचालन नु कोरताओ।
You respect them also.
नी गोड़ वारी निक गौरविंच।
What you want others to do to you, the way you want others to behave with you, you behave in the same manner with others.
इतरल नी केम चेयलन कोरताओ, लेदंते इतरल नीतो एला प्रवर्तिंचालन कोरताओ, नी गोड़ आदेव विधानमल वारी के चेयली, वारी विषयमल बोड़ा लागे प्रवर्तिंचाल।
What a wonderful word, no?
एन्ता अबुत बायन माटा कदा?
If you can do that.
मने गणकारी चेस्ते।
Your behavior will definitely change.
नी प्रवर्तन तपकोन न कस्तिं मार्तुंदे।
You want your parents to behave in a certain way with you.
नु वांकुंत उठान ना तलिदंडुल ई विधानमल नातो प्रवर्तिंचाली।
You first behave with them like that.
मतल नु प्रवर्तिंच वालत अलाग।
So behave with them.
वारी तो अलागुंदु।
So this should be our behavior.
इधि ए मने प्रवर्तन आयुंदा।
So we are all ambassadors, we are workmanship, we are witnesses, so there should be a change in our behavior.
कावटि मने प्रवर्तनल मार्क उन्नाले इनकट्टे मने अंदरम कोड़ा, आयन के रायबारलमो साक्षीलम आयन चेति पन्यायनो?
In your behavior, don't be stubborn.
नी पन्यल नु मोंडीगा, नी प्रवर्तनल मोंडीगा उन्नातु, मोर्कुड़गा उन्नातु।
The word of God says.
तेवग्रणम जप्तिंदे।
Romans chapter twelve and verse ten.
रोमिया क्रासन पत्रिका पन्यंडवत्यम पदवच्छन।
It applies to every one of us.
प्रति वक्र मने अंदरकी ए वर्तिस्तुंदे।
Chapter twelve and verse ten.
पन्यंडवत्यम पदवच्छन।
We'll read altogether, please.
वच्छनम दाइचेस अंदरम कस्तो तम।
Altogether loudly.
अंदरम कस्तो बिगरगा चोदत।
Be kindly, offering one another, respectfully.
रागम गलवाल।
Honor preferring one another.
वक्रीन अपुर गोपगायनच्छि।
Honor is preferring one another, give way for others.
इतरल की रंडु विधानमल उन्नाले, गनत विषयमल नीकट्टे वारी गोपवरगेंच।
So, behavior.
कावटि प्रवर्तन।
We saw about our appearance.
मने एक आहार्यम गुरिंची मना, दुस्तुल एला दारिंचालाने दार्भुन चूसा।
And our behavior.
प्रवर्तन गुरिंच चूसा।
Thirdly.
मोड़दिया।
First Corinthians chapter five and verse seventeen.
मध्य कोरिंटल क्रासन पत्रिका आइदवत्यम पदिहेड़ आउच्छन।
We'll read altogether.
अंदरम कस्तो तम अधिपुर।
We know this verse.
ईवच्छन मने अंदरकी भाग देरस।
Second Corinthians, chapter five and verse seventeen.
रेंडो कोरिंटल क्रासन पत्रिका आइदवत्यम पदिहेड़ आउच्छ।
We'll read altogether.
अंदरम कस्तो।
Therefore, if any man be in Christ, he is a new creature, old things are passed away, behold, all things are become new. You are, if you are in Christ.
नी एक क्रिस्त्र इन्नोन्नाट आइते?
Your character will change.
नी एक व्यतीतो मारिपोतुंद।
So be careful and conscious about your character.
कावटि नी एक व्यतीत्वान गुरिंची चाला जागरण काली गुंद।
Because you are a new creature.
इनकट्टे नु नोतनस्वस्ति।
You belong to Christ.
नी क्रिस्त्र के चेन्दन वार।
You have come into Christ.
नी क्रिस्त्र लोनी कोच्छ।
So Christ should be seen in your character.
कावटि क्रिस्तु नी एक व्यतीत्वल कन्वाड़ा।
In love, in forgiveness.
प्रेमलोनक, शमापनलोनु।
And also in your patience.
नी सहनमलोनु।
And in your humility.
नी तकिंपलो कोड़ा।
Especially as young people, you should be humble.
प्रत्येकँगा यवनस्तुल गा मेरो चाला तकिंप काली वारी उन्नाले।
It is not so among the young people.
अरे चाला मने यवनस्तुल कन्वाड़कले नी दिनाल।
Today we are proud about many things in our life.
इधिनाल चाला मने कलिंदा मने जीवतल काले चाला वाट गुरिंची, गर्विंचे वारी को।
Proud about who we are.
मने एमयोन नाव धानी बट्टी गर्विंच।
Proud about our family.
उत्तमानी बट्टी गर्विंचे वाल।
Proud about what all we have.
कलियोन धानी बट्टी गर्विंचे वाल।
Proud about all our achievements.
साधिंस्न विजयाल निक्कट्टी गर्विंचे वाल।
Proud about our capabilities.
सामार्ध्यानी गुरिंची गर्विंचे वाल।
Proud about your look, how you look.
चाला भाग गन पड़तन नन नी धानी बट्टी गर्विंचे वाल।
Proud about your beauty.
अंदायन बट्टी गर्विंचे वाल।
There may be many things which are causing you to be proud about in your life.
नी जीवतमल नु गर्विंचनान की अनेक विषयल कारणम गोतोने।
The Lord Jesus Christ said.
अरे सुक्रित्वार जप्तुनारु?
In Matthew's Gospel, chapter eleven and verse twenty-nine.
मतेस्वर्ता पद्धवन आवत्य एरै तम्मज़।
I am meek and lowly in heart.
ने न सात्वीकुड़न देन मनस्त कलवाड़न अंतर।
Learn of me.
नादन एच्कुंड़न।
Learn of me.
नादन एच्कुंड़न।
You look at me.
नु नावे चूसन।
You see that I am meek and lowly in heart.
मेरो चूस्तार ने नो, एन्तकान न सात्वीकुड़न देन मनस्त कलवाड़न ने मेरो नो चूस्तार।
Learn that basic character from the Lord Jesus Christ.
आप्राध्यमिकमनी व्यतीत्वान प्रवाणी ये सुक्रित्व निंची नेच्कुं।
Young people should learn this character early in your life.
नी जीवतमल ई आरंभ दिनाल ने यवनस्तुल गा नी विकी व्यतीत्वान अलवर्च्छ गोवाल।
When I was young.
ने न यवनस्तुल उन्नापुर।
I was proud about many things.
ने चाला विषयल गुरिंची गर्विस्तिनी।
Some things I should be proud about.
ने न कोनी विषयल गर्वगाउंदा।
That, I was very popped up.
ने न एन्तकान एग्सिप्पड़े।
I was very good in studies.
सदुल चाला भाग उन्ना।
I was the district champion.
ने जिला मोत्तमल गोड़ा मुंदुनान।
My father was in a very good position.
पतंद्रिनी एक मंच स्थानो उन्नतमय स्थानो।
I was in a big house, palatial house, with thirteen rooms.
पदमोड़ गजरुन एक पैथ, बंगलाल ने उठन।
Many servants were there.
चाला मने पन्यवाल उन्ना।
I was proud about many things.
ने चाला विषयल नीमित्तमय गर्वगाउंद।
About myself, my family, about what I have.
ना गुरिंची ना उत्तमानी कलिंदा वाटन बट्टी ने एन्ता गर्वगाउंद।
The Lord dealt with me.
कानी देवड़ ना संगत जीशड़।
I had to be broken.
ने न वेरा वड़ा उस वच्चिंदे।
I thought I was very good at studies.
ने नानुकुन ना ना सदुल ना तिरुगले नानुकु।
Not only I got low marks.
तक्कम मार्कल गो पंद्रम।
I failed in one subject in my degree class, also in practicals.
डिग्रील ओक प्रैक्टिकल्सल एक सब्जेक्टल तपन गोड़दक।
I was broken.
वेरा कोट बाटल?
The Lord was breaking me.
प्रभु नान वेरा कोट तोच्छ।
The Lord was preparing me for the future.
बौशेत्त कोसम प्रभु नान सित्त पर्स्त।
Even today, the Lord is working in me to break me only.
इनका ईरोज कोड़ा नान इनका वेरा कोट दानी के प्रभु नाम इधर पन्यजस्त ने।
The Lord takes me through various situations.
प्रभु नान वेरे वेरे परिस्थितिल गोन्ना किस्को।
I think why this is happening in my life?
अरे इनकु ना जीवतमल ई जरुतुन ने ने आलोचिन अपुर।
About my pride only.
ना गर्वानी बट्टी।
May not be seen outside.
बाटी कन्वाड़ा पोछ्च।
But in my heart.
कानी ना हुदयम।
The Lord is breaking me.
प्रभु नान वेरा कोट उठन।
The Lord will break you if you are proud.
ने गर्विस्तिगा उन्नाट आइते कच्चसंग देवड़ नी संगत जोस्ता देर कोट।
So learn this lesson to be humble in the hand of God.
कावटि पाटम नेच्कुं देवन देगर आयन चेतिल देन मनस्तल उन्नान।
First Peter, chapter five and verse five says.
मध्य की पेतर पत्रिका आइदवत्यम आइदवच्छन जप्तिंदे।
Be clothed with humility.
मने एन्तो तकिंपो वस्त्राल दारिंच, देन वस्त्राल दारिंच।
Even young people should have that clothing.
यवनस्तुल वड़ा कच्चसंग आटुं वेंटी वस्त्राल दारिंच।
It is a necessity, you should wear this cloth.
अरे कच्चसंग आवश्रमय इंदी।
The word of God says.
तेवग्रणम जप्तिंदे।
Pride will go before a fall.
पड़ीपोड़क के मुंद गर्वन उड़स्तुंदे।
God resists the pride, proud people.
आयन गर्विस्तिन येद्रिस्ताड़।
Pride is the character of Satan.
सातानी एक लक्षणमो गर्वमनी।
In Proverbs, chapter six and verse seventeen.
सामितल ग्रहमो पदवत्यम पदिहेड़ आउच्छन।
The Lord hates this pride, it says.
देवड़ी गर्वानी आसहिंचुने वारी कुन्ना।
The list of sins first is in his pride only.
पापी, पापमल जागिताल, मोतमाल दे पाप वेंटी गर्वमय अहंकार।
And also in chapter twenty-one and verse four.
इरवे एकदात्यम नालगवच्छन इनका जूस्ते।
There is a general, it talks about a generation.
अकड़ एक तरानी गुरिंची मने दोस्त।
Proverbs, chapter twenty-one.
सामितल ग्रहमो मेरो एकदात्यम।
And verse four.
नालगवच्छन।
High look and a proud heart.
अहंकार दृष्टियो गर्व रुदयमुनु।
So the Lord hates this.
देवड़ नी आसहिंचुपुर।
So we have to be careful about this.
देन विषयमल चाला जार्तगा उन्नाले।
This is sin in the sight of God.
ने न दृष्टिल ए दे पापम।
So, we have to be careful about this.
कावटि देन गुरिंची मने चाला जार्त।
So are you proud about anything in your life?
नी जीवतल देन गुरिंचन नान नी गर्विस्तुन।
Proverbs, chapter thirty and verse thirteen.
सामितल ग्रहमो मोपयावत्य पदमोड़ आउच्छन।
Proverbs, chapter thirty and verse thirteen.
मोपयावत्यम पदमोड़ आउच्छन। कनुर नेत्तीकी वच्छन वारी तरमगलदु, वारी कनुर यप्पाली एन्ता पाईकेत्ता बढ़िन।
The highness are lifted, it is lifted up.
पाईकेत्ता बढ़िन ने चाला।
Proud about many things.
गर्वम, अनेक विषयल नीमित्तमय गर्विंचे वालुन्ना।
The Lord hates this pride.
देवड़ नी ने, प्रभु नी ने, आसहिंचुने वारी।
When we read about the kings of Israel and Judah.
योदा राजल, इसरायल राजल गुरिंची चूसन, प्रस्तुन।
We read about their pride also.
वारी गर्वानी गुरिंची बमन तो।
They lift their heart, it says.
अकड़ वारी रोधयमो एन्तकान पाईकेत्ता बढ़िन गर्विंचे।
God handles that pride in their life.
वारी जीवतल ना गर्व संगत आयन चूस्पुर।
So if you want to obtain the grace of God.
नी गलिक देवु नी क्रुपन पन्नालानुकुनाट लाइते?
What is required?
एनकावल।
Humility.
तकिंपो।
And first Peter, chapter five and verse five.
मध्य की पेतर पत्रिका आइदवत्यम आइदवच्छन मने।
Be clothed with humility.
अकड़ रायबान्ना माटा?
Be clothed with humility.
मेरो देन मनस्तल वस्रम दारी।
God resists the proud.
देवड़ अहंकार ने येद्रिंची।
And use grace to the humble.
देन ने क्रुपन प्रिस्त।
What we need is grace of God.